We'll call the meeting in order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2025-20 for October 21, 2025. Those that would like to stand and join us in a little prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried. Consent agenda passes. We have two proclamations this morning. The first proclamation is to recognize the month of October as National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. I think we have a representative from Life Crisis here. Yes, we do. More than one's okay. Councilman Josh Hastings will be reading the proclamation. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I'll read it first, and then we'll turn over the comments.
All right, we have a proclamation of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abuse behavior used to gain and maintain control over another, which can occur in the form of physical, verbal, or emotional abuse. Domestic violence affects millions across the U.S., regardless of cultural background, ethnicity, sexual orientation, faith, socioeconomic status, or educational background. And whereas domestic violence is never the fault of the victims and survivors, the vast majority of cases go unreported, which leaves victims suffering silently in places where others consider safest: their home, their work, or school. And whereas we all have the ability to empower victims and survivors by offering resources, listening without judgment, and reminding them that they are not alone, education and awareness are also critical components of the effort to end domestic violence. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Wycomico County and encourages all citizens to join the movement to end domestic violence by educating themselves, speaking up, and offering support to victims and survivors. Done this 21st day of October 2025, signed by the entire Wycomico County Council.
Hi, I'm Karen Hughes, and I'm the Domestic Violence Clinical Services Coordinator for the Life Crisis Center. With me is Kelly Cologne. She is with our CASA program. And then Lisa Garcia-Baptista, she is the Domestic Violence Therapist with the Life Crisis Center. I want to thank you for honoring domestic violence, because most folks feel like it's not me, it's not my family, it's behind closed doors, it's other people. But one in three women and one in five men can be affected by domestic violence and be the victim sometime in their life. So if we just use this room alone accounted, and there would be at least three men and four women, just in this room. In September, nationally, there is a National DV Count Day, where we count every single person who we serve that had domestic violence in their history. And for this year alone, we had 71 women or victims and 20 children, just one day, that we dealt with. And we were in a training for half the day, from 9:00 to noon, we were in a training. So from noon on, that's what we had. So that's a lot of people, and it is in our communities. And so recognizing this is a way to say, yes, listen, hear it. We are this. We want to help you. Please use the Life Crisis. Call the Life Crisis Center. The hotline is available 24 hours a day. There's always somebody available. If you know somebody or have a family member that has it, or anybody that is affected, please give us a call, and we'd be glad to help you. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize White Cane Awareness Day. Ms. Amy Kraus with the National Federation for the Blind, I believe, is here. And Vice President Jeff Merritt will read the proclamation. And whoever would like to stand and join Vice President Merritt, feel free.
Good morning.
Good morning to you, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for this.
We've got room for everybody up here. Yeah, come on, come on up.
Good morning, everybody. And thank you all for being here. It's my honor to read this proclamation for White Cane Awareness Day, whereas the white cane symbolizes the ability for blind citizens to achieve a full and independent life, and the capacity to work productively in the competitive employment. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires motorists and cyclists use caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Maryland law calls upon employers to utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the state of Maryland, through public agencies, and with the assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland, should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims October 15, 2025, as White Cane Awareness Day in Wycomico County, and calls upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for blind pedestrians. Done this 21st day of October 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council.
Great.
So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. When you see a blind person, you say good morning first. That way they know you exist. How about that? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Council President. My name is Timothy Barr. I'm a lifelong resident of Wycomico County and proud to say that out loud. With me today, I've got some friends, my friend Ann, my friend Noble, and of course, you heard about Ms. Amy Kraus is here today. And we wouldn't be here without her, because she's got the eyes. So just to be, just to tell you a couple of things, blind people do live here in Wycomico County. Blind people do work here in Wycomico County. And blind people do receive training and rehabilitation here for services, right here in Wycomico County. And we're proud of that. The National Federation of the Blind does many different services for the blind community. They are an advocacy group for the most part. And the other big thing that we do in conjunction with Blind Industries and Services of Maryland on Northwood Drive is we have a summer camp program for blind children. And that camp has been going along so well and for so many years, that our original children, who started at five years old, are now 16 and 17 years old. And we had to create a whole different camp for them, because they aged out of the Braille and Richmond camp. So that's just one of the things. But the real issue is this cane. It's white. It's white for a reason. It's a universal symbol, not for us, to you who are sighted, so that you know who we are. And it's a symbol outwardly, so that you know to say hello, and to recognize our space, and to help in any way that you can for a blind person. You just ask. They may say, I don't need your help. And don't take that personally. That's just their sign of their comfort zone. They may say, yes, please, how do I find that door? How do I get out of here in case of a fire? Those kinds of things. And so those are just some of the things that you, as the community, can do to help the blind community. But we're happy to be here, and we are very, very grateful to the members of the council for this recognition. It's not the first time that you've done it, but we recognize it every time that you do, that it's a grateful honor to be here with you. And so thank you very, very much. Sure. Thank you. In front of the podium? Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
So, thanks again.
We're going to get out of your way.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all as well.
Ms. Hurley?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There are four public hearings on the agenda this morning. Each of the four public hearings have been posted on the county's website, as well as in the local newspaper. The first public hearing is on Resolution Number 170-2025. This is approving the renewal of a license agreement with the Wycomico Equestrian Club, LTD, on behalf of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for a period of five years. This leases for the use of the Wycomico Park Carriage House Building and the Wycomico Equestrian Center. The property is to be leased for a term of five years at the annual rental rate of $20,000. The property will be used by the Wycomico Equestrian Club for the sole purpose of conducting club events and approved rentals. And we do have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. And again, this is a public hearing.
Before we get into the public hearing, I was remiss. I got ahead of ourselves with the proclamations. If I could, we would like to have a moment of silence if we could for Delegate Charles Otte, who passed recently. If you don't mind, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all as well.
Ms. Hurley?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There are four public hearings on the agenda this morning. Each of the four public hearings have been posted on the county's website, as well as in the local newspaper. The first public hearing is on Resolution Number 170-2025. This is approving the renewal of a license agreement with the Wycomico Equestrian Club, LTD, on behalf of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for a period of five years. This leases for the use of the Wycomico Park Carriage House Building and the Wycomico Equestrian Center. The property is to be leased for a term of five years at the annual rental rate of $20,000. The property will be used by the Wycomico Equestrian Club for the sole purpose of conducting club events and approved rentals. And we do have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. And again, this is a public hearing.
Before we get into the public hearing, I was remiss. I got ahead of ourselves with the proclamations. If I could, we would like to have a moment of silence if we could for Delegate Charles Otte, who passed recently. If you don't mind, thank you very much. Thank you very much. The first public hearing, as Mrs. Hurley stated, on Resolution Number 170-2025. We'll open the public hearing for this specific resolution. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing for Resolution 170-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 170-2025. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Steve.
This is a public hearing on Resolution Number 171-2025. This is to authorize the county executive to execute an airline-airport operating and space use agreement with Breeze Aviation Group, Inc., for the assigned space located at the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wycomico Regional Airport. Breeze Aviation proposes to lease 347 square feet, as well as common use space in the terminal building at the airport. The property will be used for ticket counter space. The property will be leased for a term of five years with two five-year renewals, at the annual rental rate of $3,085.20, adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, if you have any questions.
It's time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 171-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good morning.
Good morning. Joe White, Wycomico County. I think you have to have some sort of agreement that you pass through here, because we, as a county, have entered agreement with Breeze to guarantee their profitability for two years. My question, that I hope gets answered when your discussion, is if there's a five-year lease, how will this play into the other factors of this grant, this million-dollar grant that we won out and received, and the obligations the county has to make sure that they are profitable?
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments for Resolution Number 171-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 171-2025.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Rudy, good morning. How are you?
Yeah.
We have one question you know of. If you could address Mr. White's concerns, we'd appreciate that.
Good morning, Tony Rudy, Airport Director. So the revenue guarantee agreement that was referred to is separate from this operating and space use agreement. That we will be monitoring on a regular basis to assess whether the airline is meeting their revenue goals, or if they're falling short of that. And the purpose of the revenue guarantee was to help them, especially with the service starting up and getting recognized by the community. So that is separate from this agreement. This agreement does allow them to actually operate at the airport and lease space they need in the terminal building.
It kind of creates, it's the agreement for them to have like their ticket counter. Is that correct?
For a ticket counter and office space, that's correct.
Right. And also their ingress and egress, landing.
Yes.
Boarding and, what's the word for not?
And conducting, basically conducting an airline business at the airport.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 171-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 172-2025. This is to authorize the county executive to execute an airline-airport operating and space use agreement with American Airlines to continue the operation of its business of transporting passengers, cargo, and mail by air at the Salisbury-Wycomico Regional Airport. American Airlines is proposing to lease 2,236 square feet for ticket counter and office space in the terminal building at the airport. The property is to be leased for a term of five years with two five-year renewal options, at the annual rental rate of $57,487.56, adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index.
Sorry, this time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 172-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in regard to this specific resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
I'm Mary Hubner, and I live in Salisbury. And I was just speaking to Mr. Rudy. I know nothing about airports, and I don't understand anything about it at all. And I really don't have the right to speak. But I just wish we had a plane that would fly to Baltimore, Maryland. It would just be absolutely wonderful. And it's so frustrating to live here in Salisbury. And I can't fly back to Baltimore. I'm sorry. That's all I've got.
You have a lot of company.
Yeah.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 172-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 172-2025. Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Tony, are we going to get an airplane to take us to Baltimore anytime soon?
No. And I do appreciate the comment. I do receive those comments, similar comments, quite often. And if our data supported flights to Baltimore, we certainly would be going after an airline to try to do that. But as of right now, our data does not support that.
All right. There has been a suggestion by Breeze that it's possible that they could expand different destinations in the future. It's probably quite a ways out. And I know that they did not say Baltimore. I recognize that. But there could be future destinations.
There could be.
Alternate destinations, yes.
Yes, definitely.
Mm-hmm. I just read yesterday in New York Post where it said Orlando is the number-one vacation destination spot in the country.
Wow.
So we picked a good one there. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 172-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Rudy.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 173-2025. This is authorizing the county executive to apply and accept a housing rehabilitation grant in the amount of $300,000 from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development to be utilized for persons with low and/or moderate incomes. The CDBG block grant program is a federally-funded program designed to assist governments with activities directed toward neighborhood and housing revitalization, economic development, and improve community facilities and services. It is administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And you have Tracy Taylor here, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. If you have any questions, then she will also provide an update as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 173-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium and state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 173-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 173-2025.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Would you, Ms. Taylor, would you want to give us an overview very briefly on what this entails?
Do you mind if Kaylee Justice, the planning manager, can help me speak?
Certainly.
She's authoring the application. Tracy Taylor, Planning Director, Wycomico County. I'll start off by saying that this is our application for housing rehab. It's a program that we've been running in Wycomico County and participating in for many, many years. This public hearing is twofold, and I'll have Kaylee go into that in detail. It's to also give our report out of our fiscal year '24 CDBG grant, and that it was a two-year grant. This is also a two-year grant, to give the status update of that, and then to also ask for approval of our new application that'll be going in this Friday. Kaylee?
Kaylee Justice, planning manager. Just to give a brief overview of our current grant, which is MD24CD21, this grant spans through 2023 and will end at the end of this calendar year. Through this grant, we were able to service 21 beneficiaries. And in both this grant and our current grant application, we have set aside $20,000 for Chesapeake Housing Mission recipients to install ADA-compliant ramps on their properties. To date, we, sorry to go back, we had requested $500,000 in that grant application, and were awarded $320,000. To date, we have spent around $248,000. So we are on track to spend that through the end of the calendar year. This new grant application, we are requesting $300,000. And we do have the ability next year to reapply if we do spend that money in a timely manner.
Yes, Josh?
The only question I had was just, obviously, this is a federally-funded program that gives money to DHCD, right? And then from that, we apply. Given that the federal government can't even figure out how to keep its own lights on, are we, is there going to be money next year to apply? Or do we expect that there will be funds, will be funds be available? And by the way, is, just from my understanding, is that, are we taking federal funds, and the state is holding on to them from prior year budget? Or how does that work?
So just to go back in time a little bit, when we had the initial federal pause back, I think it was in the spring, at that point, that would have been our normal training period for CDBG. For CDBG, if you're going to apply, you have to attend their training every year. And so that would have been their training period with a grant deadline of somewhere in the neighborhood of June 2025. That was immediately called off, put on hold. So normally, this is a strange cycle for us to be coming to you at this time of year and for this due date. But that was due to the federal pause. They have already gotten a commitment on their funds for this next federal fiscal year. So we believe that we are fine, assuming anything, of course, you know, Councilman Hastings, could happen. But that's the whole reason why CDBG held off on the training until they got their allotment for this year. So they do know their funding amount. We feel comfortable. That's why we're not going in for the full $800,000, because the $800,000 is a spend down over two years. And we don't know now what the next fiscal year will hold. So we feel safe at 300, what we were awarded before, that we will have that to spend in addition to the 70 we're carrying over. So I feel comfortable that that money is secure next cycle, which will actually be in the spring, probably. They'll go back to regular cycle. We'll have to reevaluate at that time. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Is this funding dispersed to other agencies, or can individuals contact the county directly for assistance? How does it, briefly?
So we can always, if we're contacted by Habitat or SNHS, we can always go in and apply for money through different funding sources for them, and they be a sub-recipient. But in this case, with housing rehab, typically, it's the homeowner, correct me if I'm wrong, Kaylee, it's the homeowner that reaches out to us. And we already have a working list of people waiting to be served. And we continue to carry that list forward. So it's normally the homeowner comes and meets with Joni Kendall in our office. We do the application and make sure that they qualify, and we go from there. But in the case of Chesapeake Housing, that's handled a little bit differently, correct?
Correct. So they are referred to us, and we handle the paperwork from there.
From their organization.
From the organization.
How do individuals in the county know that there's this pot of money there that they could take advantage of if necessary? Is it promoted in any fashion?
Well, we do publicize it.
Okay.
And we do publicize it. And even with these public hearings, I think, are good to people, to make people aware that we do have these funds. And the unfortunate thing is when we apply for money, we don't know if we're going to be able to help 10 homes, 20 homes. It just depends on each individual project and what the cost comes in at. But we are actively, like I said, trying, as Kaylee mentioned, trying to spend down the remainder, which is around 70, $72,000 of the previous grant through the remainder of this year. And then this grant will be hopefully awarded, and we'll move forward on new funds. So in this venue, I encourage people to contact our office and to at least get the paperwork in to see if they qualify, and then can be put on our list, our waiting list.
And to add, the health department's also aware of the program. We also do well-inseptic installations, so they refer individuals to us as well who need assistance.
That'll use up your funds. You're worrying about 800. I think you could use, I think you could spend it.
Yeah, it's thousands.
Yeah.
To do any septic.
Okay, interesting. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 173-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 174-2025. This is to approve Daniel Elcheck Esquire and Saw Ewing LLP as special legal counsel for Wycomico, for Wycomico County on matters relating to the fiscal year '26 FOP collective bargaining.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 174-2025. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lufman, did you?
Director, Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Daniel Elcheck.
So, glad to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so Mr. Elcheck, I believe, drove down from Baltimore for this meeting today. So we really appreciate that. But he has 25 years' experience as an attorney. Specifically, he's done a lot with sort of labor law and CBA agreements. But I'll allow him to go into the, so we thought he was great. He would be a great partner with us, and I'll allow him to go into the details.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Council President and council members. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll keep the short version. As Bunky said, I've been practicing law for 25 years, always in the area of labor and employment, always representing employers. And the focus of my practice is unionized employers, collective bargaining, and in the public sector. So I represent a number of public entities in and around Maryland. I've been doing the labor negotiations for the city of Salisbury since they adopted bargaining rights in their labor code, Salisbury University, Ocean City, Baltimore City, some other entities. So this is, this is what I do. I do public safety negotiations, police, fire. I also do civilian side. I've just come here for the FOP negotiations. I have the, as I said, good fortune, and I don't mean that facetiously. I, I have the, I was a good fortune, and I don't mean that facetiously, to, to have a lot of experience negotiating with the representatives of your FOP lodge, who also represent most of the FOP lodges around the state, Kieran Dowdy and, and Herb Weiner of that firm, very good working relationship with them. And, you know, if, if engaged here, my, my objective is to get the county, the agreement that the county wants, that's, that's good for the county, efficiently, quickly, and get out of the way, and let everyone get back to business. That's, that's how I do my job.
What is your experience as far as dealing with executive legislative forms of government, specifically during collective bargaining agreements?
So I, I've represented a number of different counties and municipalities with varying governmental structures. So I've, I've had sort of strong mayor, strong executive governments that I've represented, others where it was the council exercised executive authority, so I've sort of done it all different ways. If there's anything specific on that?
Well, the reason I ask is because I, I find it a really unusual set of circumstances that surrounds how we come to our, our final conclusions in agreements with a collective bargain agreement, because the process starts out where the, initially, the executive works through the details with the, with the Fraternal Order of Police. I believe the sheriff has some input in that process, but not the council, which is okay. That's how it's, that's how it's been established, so that is how it is. The problem that we face, and we really faced this last year, which I thought was really counterproductive, we're all pretty much on the same side with a lot of it, 99% of it. But I felt like last year, there was a small amount of, of concern on the part of the council in doing what we considered to be our due diligence and trying to make sure we had all the, all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted. And I felt that we really became, it became a confrontational issue between the attorney who was representing the executive branch of government, which also is supposed to be representing Wacomiko County as a whole. And it was, it would, it, it got very divisive, and I didn't like that. I just felt it wasn't allowing for a good exchange, a proper exchange. Then we got into, then we got into time delays, and it even got worse. And we went into a process of arbitration that never should have occurred. So that, that is what I'm explaining, whereas you take one position, and it's happened in other years before, where you're negotiating with the executive, and then when the council gets in, they may have another question. I, I would like it to be done prior, but it does, we're not allowed to do that. The law does not, the statute doesn't allow us to, to, to that liberty. So that's the example.
I, I understand. And I think, you know, I certainly, I don't want to comment on what others have done in the past, but, you know, certainly, my objective would be to avoid that kind of conflict and delay and just, you know, get, get to the goal that, that everyone wants to get to. I, I think I would certainly want to speak with, with the executive and her team and, and council and, and figure out if there are ways to, to sort of short-circuit any of that dynamic happening later on in the process.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, should we approve it? It is sort of a heads-up to you to be aware of that and try to be cognizant of the fact that we don't want things to go sideways under any circumstances.
Understood.
It might cost us more in legal expenses.
Yeah, just wanted to underscore that. It's, we, I don't know how many times we've gone through this process since I've been here, but this is like our fifth FOP agreement, and, which I would prefer, just me speaking, many, you know, many-year agreement, a long, longer agreements than, than just getting into one and then having to change it really quickly. But through all the ones that I've been a part of, what's, the ones that have gone the best is when, you know, when our legal counsel and folks have gone out of their way to say to the council, hey, here's what's happening, here's the concern, what do you all, do you have any feedback? And we can, the way, the way we've been able to do that, not that we have any kind of, have to have our fingerprints on that, but I think that's really made the process quicker and, and more efficient and very collegial, and we come out with a better result on all sides. So just wanted to underscore that from my view.
And I think we either have, or we will certainly share with you the timeline, because that's probably the most critical part of it, that we stay within the boundaries of the, of the deadlines of the timeline, because that's critical, too. Any other questions or comments? Did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, I'm, anything, I'm here to answer questions, but otherwise, I'm good.
Yeah, we really appreciate you coming down.
No, not my pleasure. Happy to appear.
All those in favor of Resolution 174-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 175-2025. This is authorizing the purchase of Axon Body-Worn Cameras to include hardware, software, and services for a term of five years with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for certain equipment for the Wacomiko County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $1,718,101.61. And we have Captain Rich Weersburg here with the Wacomiko County Sheriff's Office if you have any questions.
entertain a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 175-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Captain Weersburg? If you can bring anybody up with you if you'd like. If you brought backup, I don't know if you did.
Brought my notes.
Isn't that what they call it, backup? Appreciate you being here.
Afternoon. Pleasure.
So Axon Body-Worn Camera, I was surprised as the, how, how expensive it all turns out to be, really. And then we have, of course, we have hardware, we have software, correct? What, what, what else does it entail?
Well, we currently have Axon Body Cameras now. As we all know, technology changes very rapidly, and as technology changes, so do costs. So one thing Axon does provide with us in this new contract is every two and a half years, we update our whole body camera system. We change out the old cameras and get new. One thing that we have that most agencies don't have is two body cameras for every deputy. The main reason for that is, as most of you're aware, if I don't believe all of you're aware, that we have take-home car program. So at the end of the shift, the deputy still has their body camera on, and then they start the next shift. So if they get a call for service in between those two, at the beginning or the end, they have their body cameras with them. They're not a time when they don't have them. When they come in for roll call, they change them out and have a fresh set. But also, what comes with this new contract that we currently don't have is, one thing we ran into, we've ran out of licenses. We had what we call basic licenses, which don't allow deputies to do all the features that the body worn camera can do. We have to have now a pro license. Without the pro license, we can't even use the cameras, how they're designed. This new system also comes with Draft 1, which is a AI-generated report-writing process that will help, help deputies get the report writing done faster, more efficiently. There are safeguards in place to make sure the report is not over-AIed, but it helps generate a report for a deputy. Live translation, translation, which we think is probably one of the biggest advantages that we have, when a deputy is communicating with someone in the community that does not speak English, the Axon camera translates instantaneously, does 57 languages. I can go over a list of them real quick for you. Arabic, Armenian, Bosnian, Czech, Danish, Finnish, Hungary, Italian, Japanese, Spanish, et cetera.
It translates into the camera, no, it doesn't vocalize it.
It does, does everything. So I'd have my camera on, I turn that feature. As you talk, it will translate to me what you're saying. I will speak, and then it will translate into the language that you are speaking. Nope, it's instantaneous.
Wow.
That is the biggest feature that we've seen so far with this new system.
That's awesome.
Also does evidence translation. So if, after a situation happens, we upload it to the cloud. Within five minutes, it will do a transcript of what was talked about, so if a deputy needs it or detective needs it right away. We have Policy Chat, which we're also excited about. So if there's a situation on the road that someone's not 100% familiar with, with our policy, if you've ever seen our policy books, they're two very large books, now they're just all online, you can ask the camera a question, and it will spit out the answer based on our policy. Form 1 is also a new feature that we are going to, is when you have a license plate or a driver's license, it will transmit that data into the report, which again will save deputy time, it will fill in those fields for us. Brief 1 is another new exciting thing for us. Well, this is more of a, for detectives. So after it reviews all the evidence that's put in, a detective can go back after the system has prioritized it and 100% downloaded the system, a detective could go and look for key things. So God forbid, we have a serious incident in the county, and we'll just make up John Doe A. Any, the detective will put in there, says, any camera that heard John Doe A, it will automatically take you to that feed in the film or in the data, so that deputy doesn't have to listen to hours and hours, just to help in the initial parts of the investigation. And I, pretty much, that's it. All the new things that we currently don't have.
Just unclear, as far as reading through here is, I know usually when folks get, a new institution gets new technology, that usually requires more in-house staff to be able to help the rest of the staff understand how to utilize the technology. Are, is Axum providing that? Or is that done internally? Do we have a point person?
Well, we've had Axon, I can't tell you how, we've had it for at least six years now, if not longer. I believe it's our second or third contract. Very rarely do we have an issue. We do have an internal IT person that will help us. Our, usually, our biggest issue that we've had over the years is we have to categorize all videos. So sometimes the system can't keep up with that, meaning if multiple deputies go on a scene, let's say it's a traffic stop, it only captures the first couple deputies within 15 minutes. If that deputy comes in after 15 minutes, it automatically doesn't place him or her on that call. So there's a little house cleaning there. But technology-wise and problem-wise, we've had very little issues.
So I guess what I'm hearing on that is just, even though there's a great jump in technology, which sounds awesome, by the way, I'm excited for you all, it doesn't require any extra staffing?
No extra staffing. And one thing we have had through the years, Axon, is when we've had a small issue, internal person contacts them, and our turnaround time is very short. Thank you.
AI, they're concerned to me. You won't be able to change anything with the, I think you said something about AI.
So the, the, the computer, I just used the word AI, it's artificial intelligence. The system will translate everything that was done to help the deputy write a report, for example.
You can't change anything, like?
Cannot change a thing.
Photos and stuff.
It cannot. There's all safeguards within the system, absolutely.
Because I know people can put other people on.
No, the system won't allow it. The system won't allow it.
It scares me when I hear about AI.
Yeah, unfortunately, not, unfortunately, unfortunately, the system is designed, we can't touch it, we cannot get into it and do anything. One thing I did forget to mention, too, is you may not be aware, all our new interview rooms in the new building is also an Axon interview system, so we no longer have DVDs, thumb drives, et cetera, it goes right to the cloud. And if we have a serious situation, for example, we can tell the state's attorney, we would like you to watch this interview, send them a code, they can log into their evidence system and watch the video at real time. They don't have to be in our office to watch it. And all those interviews now will also be transcribed and certified for court through Axon, so we don't have to pay anybody to come and transcribe those for us. And we're also saving money for the language line, once we get this up and running.
Just a question on the, the money part of this. I, I see the sum total is 1.7 million, but it looks like we issue a payment every February starting in 2026?
Yes, sir, it's every five years, a five-year agreement. And at the two-and-a-half-year mark, all our current body worn cameras will be sent back, and they send us a whole new set. So we have refurbished our cameras. Now, one thing is, we have not had an issue. We've only in the 10-plus years we've been using Axon, I think, in that time, we've had to send two cameras back that went faulty for one reason or another.
Thank you. Not really relevant to the decision today, but I noticed that the first year was 156.6, and the, all the other years were around 390. Any reason why that first year was less?
My understanding is when Captain, or sorry, Major Richardson looked at our budget, we already had roughly, give or take, 65,000 set up for the old contract, so we tried to stay within that as close as we could for that budgetary, this budgetary year. I believe Major Richardson, who was here last meeting, for that transfer of funds to cover that.
Yeah, is any of the smaller police forces, say like Pittsville or Fruitland, piggyback off this contract? Or the follow-up to that question, are there cameras that they wear, do they feed into the sheriff's office storage or anything like that?
No, they do not. Each, each agency has their own contract, and I believe every agency in the county is with Axon, and they all have their own contract with Axon.
Would be any savings for the, the agencies to combine and possibly bid together?
I'd have to call their rep and ask them, but I don't know. I would, I would say they like to handle each agency individual, and no offense to government, I don't know if we could get all three governments on page to pay the same amount.
I'm just, anyway. All right.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 175-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Captain.
Thanks. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the submission of a reappointment to the Social Services Advisory Board by Mr. Bunky Lufman, our Director of Administration.
Good morning, again. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration. And before I formally submit this, I just wanted to thank the council, you know, and I should have done this with, with Mr. Alcheck sitting here, but we had requested that you guys put him on the agenda before noon, because he, he drove from Baltimore, now he's got to drive to Philadelphia, I believe, for a court case. So apparently, very, very devoted attorney, but thank you. That was only possible because when you set the agenda, you allowed him to be heard before noon, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So here to formally submit, Councilwoman Shaney Shields to the Social Services Advisory Board for reappointment. They help, the advisory board helps select the local director and advise the local director, and they periodically review and evaluate the local department and things like that. So it's a really incredible and important board, so I'm happy to put Mrs. Shaney Shields, Councilwoman Shaney Shields, forward again for reappointment.
Okay, before you, is Resolution Number 176-2025, confirming the reappointment of Shaney Shields as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board.
A motion from counsel to approve Resolution 176-2025. So moved. Second? Second? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is the submission of reappointments to the Airport Commission.
So as Ms. Hurley said, we have a, a few different reappointments, and I, I want to say, the reason that you're getting some reappointments is as we've sort of went through this and looked at our current boards and commissions, I've tasked with our county folks that staff these commissions, if there are not people who are current, we either need to reappoint them and certainly talk to them, if you haven't met in a while, to see if they even would be on it. That would create more openings, so we can do more appointments and have all our boards current. So thank you for putting all these on the agenda, I really appreciate it. But that's the reason why you're getting several. So the first person I'd like to formally submit is Weston Young for reappointment to the Wacomiko County Airport Commission.
Why doesn't he read, submit all, could you do all the submissions? That would save you time.
Okay. And I'd also like to formally submit Wayne Strasberg for reappointment to the Wacomiko County Airport Commission, and formally submit Matthew Kramer for reappointment to the Airport Commission, and formally submit Nola Arnold for reappointment to the Wacomiko County Airport Commission.
Okay.
Thank you, Bunky.
Before you, is Resolution Number 177-2025, confirming the reappointment of Weston S. Young, PE, as a member to the Wacomiko County Airport Commission.
entertain a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 177-2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution 178-2025, confirming the reappointment of R. Wayne Strasberg as Chair of the Wacomiko County Airport Commission.
entertain a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 178-2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Strasberg has been under contract to the county for a number of years, and some
and some of that work's been at the airport, I understand, as an advisory. So how does that work into him being on the board and being advisor? I mean, he's getting paid for some of it, some of it's not. And I mean, it seems like there could be some kind of a conflict there.
He doesn't take a salary for any of his work on the commission, however.
I know that.
If myself or the county executive has a question on the airport, then we bring him in, and he sort of works as a consultant. I do understand your question, but that's sort of how it works.
So he's on the commission as a commission member, but if the executive has a question about the airport, he gets, and he asks that question, he gets paid for that?
He, his portfolio has several things that you've seen in his bill, and that's, that's one of them, that if we have questions about the airport, certainly.
With any of the other commissioners on the airport, if the county executive was to ask them a question, would they get paid?
They're not, none of these folks, and I'm not aware of anyone on that airport commission other than Mr. Strausberg that's on, that we pay as a consultant, though.
I guess for clarity there, does, while he's serving on the commission, does he, does he bill that? Is that billable time?
No.
We know that. We're talking about where he gets.
To be clear, I could read the faces of folks in the audience who are, who are understanding.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 178, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Post.
Motion is carried, five to one. Resolution 178, 2025 passes.
Okay, next is Resolution 179-2025, confirming the reappointment of Matthew E. Kramer as Vice Chair of the Wacomico County Airport Commission.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 179, 2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 179, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 180-2025. This is confirming the reappointment of Nola M. Arnold to the Wacomico County Airport Commission.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 180, 2025. So move. Second? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is a submission of appointments and reappointments to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
The first per, well, the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board provides oversight, impartial oversight of the public guardianship cases to ensure that wards receive services and treatment appropriate to their disabilities. So the first person formally submit is, to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, is Rena Patel, Esquire. And the second person I'd like to formally submit for appointment is Christopher Snyder to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Would you like me to do the reappointments as well?
Yes, thank you.
And then for reappointment, like formally submit Jason Salmons to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. And I'd like to formally submit Denise White, oh, there's another. Denise White to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. And finally, I'd like to submit Rachel White to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board as well.
Okay, before you use Resolution Number 181-2025, confirming the appointment of Rena J. Patel, Esquire, to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 181, 2025.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 182-2025, confirming the appointment of Christopher S. Snyder, D.O., to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 182, 2025. So move. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 183-2025, confirming the reappointment of Jason Salmons, MSW-LCSW-C, to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 183, 2025.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 184-2025, confirming the reappointment of Denise M. White to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 184, 2025. So move. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 185-2025, confirming the reappointment of Rachel White to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 185, 2025.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is a submission of reappointments to the Board of Electrical Examiners.
So these are all reappointments. So I'm formally submitting the name John McIntyre as, for reappointment to Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. I'm sorry, I skipped a step. The Board has some responsibilities. They issue licenses for electricians to do work within Wacomico County and incorporated towns. They also hear complaints regarding work done by electricians and complaints of work being done without authorization. The Board oversees county license testing, testing for master electricians, general electricians, and limited license electricians. So that's what the Board does. So I'm formally submitting John McIntyre to the Wacomico County Board of Election Examiners for reappointment. Formally submitting Adam Smith to the Wacomico County Board of Election Examiners. Formally submitting for reappointment Christopher Fedor to the Wacomico County Board of Election, oh, I'm sorry, Electrical Examiners. Formally submitting for reappointment Robert Simmons to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. And formally submitting for reappointment Brett Callaway to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Okay, before you use Resolution Number 186-2025, confirming the reappointment of John D. McIntyre to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 186, 2025. So move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 188-2025. This is confirming the reappointment of Adam Smith to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 188, 2025. So move. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution 189-2025, confirming the reappointment of Christopher Fedor to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 189, 2025.
So move.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 190-2025, confirming the reappointment of Robert S. Simmons, Jr., to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 190, 2025.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
And next is Resolution Number 191-2025, confirming the reappointment of Brett Callaway to the Wacomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 191, 2025. So move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a submission of Adam N. Corey as Deputy Director to the Department of Public Works.
Yeah, so I'm formally submitting Adam Corey for Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works. Adam has, since he's been here, he has really showed a lot of leadership. He has taken on not only the environmental role he was hired for, he's also went outside that scope and brought us into compliance at the landfill, also helped us work through with, obviously, your assistance in the trash issue and the space issue we've had. And we continue to work on that. He's been working on dredging and just all around. There's, there's really not a lot in public work he's not a part of. He also, in our weekly public works meetings, has taken on a leadership role. What I describe him as, he's sort of become a chief among seconds, where he really stood out for his leadership. And, and not just leadership internally, but I think externally as well. I think now, in a very short period of time, I think the public associates Adam, obviously, with the landfill. He's, he's been out there, he's been really transparent, he's been willing to talk to anyone. He opened up tours for anyone that wanted to take him, you know, council members, thank you for going, but also members of the public. I think Greater Salisbury Committee, I think there were different committees that also did the tours. So we really appreciate that. And so he's been, he's been great in his time here. We really feel like a promotion to Deputy Director of Public Works would be, would be wise of us to do. And we, we seek your confirmation for his formal submission. He is here in the audience, if you have any questions.
Before you use Resolution Number 192-2025, confirming the appointment of Adam N. Corey, L-E-H-S, as Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 192, 2025.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think Mr. Corey would make an excellent addition to this organization. All those in favor of Resolution 192, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Corey.
Okay, next is a submission of Kaylee Justice as Deputy Director to the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Kaylee has really worked hard and, and on several different projects. Grant reconciliation being a big one, which was sort of, she's also, like Adam, taken on things that were sort of outside of her central scope to really help the county in times when we've had staff turnover and things like that. And it looks like because of her efforts, we're going to get about three-quarters of a million dollars back from the state on a, on a grant that had some issues with, for previous staff from timekeeping, you know, that kind of thing. And she really got the paperwork in order, did the submission, and we look forward to receiving that check soon from the state. But that's just one of the things she's done. She's, she's done several things across the planning and zoning scope. And she, we have two different sort of things, two different offices and plans. And one is sort of the inspectors, and the other sort of the planning side. And, and so she has wide respect amongst staff on both sides of the hallway, if you will. And so we really believe, she was also clearly the best candidate when we interviewed several folks. So we really believe, again, and it feels good to be able to give these positions to an internal candidate that she has earned and deserves to be Deputy Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. And she also is here, as well as our Director, Tracy Taylor. If you have any questions, be there open.
Okay, before you use Resolution Number 193-2025, confirming the appointment of Kaylee Justice as Deputy Director of the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 193, 2025.
So move.
Second? Any discussion? I would say I think this is another excellent addition. So we're really happy about both of these. This is really, this is a good day. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Mr. President, I'd say we've also got a lot of other good staff here in planning, zoning. I see Becky and others in back. It's, we're really building a good team, and I really appreciate that.
All those in favor of Resolution 193, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Justice.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 194-2025. This is amending the fiscal year 2026 budget to approve a proposal from the Cohen Law Group to provide cable franchise renewal consulting services for the city of Salisbury and Wacomico County, Maryland, an amount of $60,000 to cover the costs. And Mr. Charles Schmeckel here is here Deputy Director of the Department of Finance.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 194, 2025. So move. Second?
A second.
And discussion?
Is that our board? The question is?
Yes.
$60,000?
Yeah, the $60,000s are, yes, if you could come forward, please. We appreciate that. Thank you very much for being here. How's everyone?
Good. Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Charles Schmeckel, Deputy Finance Director.
The, that is our estimate, based on what they have provided to us as a split between us and the city. Us, with us doing it with the city, cable customers in the city of Salisbury are also Wacomico County. And so doing it as a combined thing ultimately will save the county money, because if we had to go out, they will have to look at the same people twice for us with a different firm. This company is well-regarded in the industry and has worked with the county previously on these types of agreements.
Do you have anything, Charles?
I think what she said is perfectly fine, unless anybody has any questions about what's?
You say that every time you use YouTube. There you go.
I have a lot to learn.
Not that it's terribly relevant to this particular resolution, but I do hope we start trying to gear towards getting some type of compensation for streaming as opposed to just basic cable.
I, I believe that would have to be something that would come down from the state to give us the authority to be able to charge for that. And so at this moment, this is the avenue that we have. And so this will allow us to continue to charge for those who are still connected, and it will also allow us to do an audit to make sure that Comcast has been paying us appropriately.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 194, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 195-2025. This is to approve a memorandum of understanding between Wacomico County and the city of Salisbury for the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission to hear matters for the city of Salisbury.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 195, 2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Taylor, if you could come up very briefly, because I just, this is more so for the public's knowledge as opposed to the council's, just so that everyone gets an understanding of where we are between the two government entities.
Sure. Tracy Taylor, County Planning Director. So as many of you know, we passed legislation, the county did a few months ago, to separate the planning commission. Historically, it had been a joint planning commission, city of Salisbury, Wacomico County. And for a number of reasons, there was a decision to split the commission. Wacomico County has worked really hard with Andrew Illuminati and our planning staff to, and, and the county administrative office to find our members and appoint our members with council confirmation, and we have that in place. It's been known for about seven months that we were moving in this direction. So we had our first county planning commission meeting in September, where we focused on planning commission training and open meetings training. And then we just recently had our second meeting, where we actually had some cases come before the planning commission. The city side of things, my understanding is that they have their legislation in place. They've created their planning commission. They have not made appointments as of yet. So the purpose of this MOU is to allow for a very brief period, which brief meaning probably November, maybe December, but possibly just one month, because they do have some members that are being forwarded to the city council for confirmation, that instead of holding development projects up, that our county planning commission would be able to hear some city cases hear some city cases at our November meeting with the constraints that the city will be responsible for providing staff or meeting minutes. They will compensate the county for any staff time that's been utilized for this meeting. And Chairman DeShield and myself will be the ones to determine which projects come before the county commission. Obviously, we don't, we don't want to have a concept, you know, come before our planning commission that then gets pushed to a whole different planning commission in December. So we're going to be very particular about what projects we put on the meeting. We will, our plan is to hold it the same day, the third Thursday of the month. Our meeting time is now four. We would have the city cases before that, either at 1:00 or 1:30 with a slight break between the two meetings so that our commission members could, you know, have dinner. So that's our plan right now. I fully anticipate that the city will be able to move forward in December, but there is that possibility that they wouldn't be able to make their first full meeting until January. And if so, we would cover November and December cases.
I know there's a serious backlog right now with the city of Salisbury and I think it's warranted.
I think this was the county executive's intent was to provide an avenue for some of those development proposals to move forward and not be caught for two to three months, you know, waiting for the city commission to get up and running. So we're trying to, you know, address that concern from the city and from the executive's office.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 195-2025?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yes.
I had set over language.
I missed it. Thank you. I got it here.
The council received communication from a citizen questioning whether the county planning commission doing work or in this fashion with the city was legal. My view is that if there is a problem with a legality issue, it's a problem for the city of Salisbury and not the county. And I suggested that the MOU be, that it be amended to include an indemnification paragraph such that if there's any litigation that results, that the city is solely responsible for that litigation. It protects the county so the county doesn't get, doesn't have to pay legal fees or have any costs associated with this that would include legal fees.
Thank you, Bob. I really appreciate that.
But that would require the MOU to be amended to add that language.
Yes.
I submitted language. Mr. Illuminati may have his own language. I'm not wedded to my language, but I just think that the MOU should be amended to include indemnification language.
If you'd be liberty, Jeff, can you go ahead and read the amendment? We'll get a second and then we can discuss it.
Okay. Do I need to make a motion?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make, make a motion to amend the MOU with the following. Indemnification, the city shall indemnify and hold the county harmless from and against all damages, losses, costs, liabilities, expenses and deficiencies, including without limitation, interest expenses, reasonable attorney's fees and expenses, damages that result or arise out of this memorandum of understanding, including but not necessarily limited to the county planning and zoning commission, providing services to the city relating to imminent planning and zoning issues within the city, including the review of pending applications before the city's planning and zoning commission.
Motion is there? Second? Second. Mr. Illuminati, not to put you on the spot, but would you like a copy of it?
No, I've seen it.
Okay.
Again, it's Director Taylor said, the county's not hearing controversial matters. This is not to look at comprehensive plans, zoning text amendments, if you want to put the amendment in, to put it in there, but from a purely reviewing a site plan or reviewing a sign to make sure it comports, there's not going to be litigation. But if that's what it takes to get this done so the city can keep moving forward, then absolutely, I'm not going to try to massage the language to find something. I don't have that type of ego.
No, we're just, I don't think it has anything to do with egos. I think it's the fact that we're just making sure that we cover all our bases.
No, and that's why I'm saying I'm...
I want to make sure you're okay with the legal aspect of it.
I, I'm completely fine if that's what can help the citizens of Salisbury.
Just want to make sure.
Don't have that.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Amendment is passed. Thank you, Mr. Illuminati. Any other discussion in reference to the resolution? All right. Seeing none. All those, any other comments, Mr. Benson?
Nothing.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of Resolution 195-2025 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Chatel, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President Cannon. Good morning, council. My name is Anjali Chatel. I'm the internal auditor and I would like to present Resolution 196-2025, annual report submitted by the county internal auditor.
And a motion from Council to approve Resolution 196-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
The focus of this exercise is to present to the council and to the executive annually on the fulfillment of the audit plan, results of the quality assessment and to discuss resources as needed. And I would also just like to make a moment to say special thanks to council for the opportunity to continue to serve. And there's other thanks as well in the report.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Josh?
Mr. Don, it might be helpful for the public to understand what you, projects completed, just to, I wonder if you have those readily available or I can read them off if not...
Yeah, no, I, I can, yeah, it's fine. Okay, so there were seven resolutions that were passed in fiscal year 2025. They were the information technology infrastructure report. Of course, for that one, there were two reports, one that was presented in closed session and then the public one that was largely redacted. Then there was the sick pool audit, the cell phone audit, the workplace culture audit follow-up, purchase card or P-card audit, believe audit and the special event audit for Safari at the quarry. There were a number of recommendations with each of those.
And you still have the gift card review, roads division audit, fuel, et cetera.
Yes.
Grants audits, cash controls audit and billing audit.
Yeah, the, the cash controls audit, the, it was two parts, one for the civic center, one for solid waste. The civic center is in the final draft stage. They get 30 days for submitting comments and hopefully that will be presented next month, that report.
Some of the prior audits that you mentioned with recommendations were from 2022 and the status of recommendations is that, you know, there's still work underway. Is that any major concerns or is that part of the natural process?
It's the, the audit itself is underway. The, and this might go to discussion about resources where I'm a one-person shop. So we did the peer review, it was the first peer review and that, that took some resources. And so I'm a little behind on my audits from the fiscal year 2025 plan. So, so the grant audit is, and there are others that I'm still working on. So the, it's, it's more about the audit being underway, not necessarily the implementations.
Okay. All right, that was my question. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All those in favor of Resolution 196-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence and your concerns.
No public comments, that's great.
Hello, my name is Joe White, Parsonsburg. There's a, there's a couple items that we, that had been discussed in the last 90 to 120 days that I, I think would be great to have a public update. On, on April 15th, we, the, the county was asked to spend 2.3 million dollars to remove 100,000 cubic yards of dredge sludge out of Sharp's Point. Then an additional 300,000 was allocated for capital improvements at the cost of 7.5 million. We passed the October 1st deadline that was spoken about from the executive staff on the, at the April 15th meeting. And I'd like to know if we, if the river is getting dredged this year and what's the status of both the money spent and the first 100,000 cubic yards. Then we, we went through the summer with the, with the crisis at the landfill and, and the proposed shutdown on Saturdays and then Tuesdays and then another day. And the, the council avoided that, but we were told that construction would need to start on cell seven this winter and that an RFP would have been put out by now. The update seems to be that the RFP will be put out in November, but the update would be, where does that put the construction? Everybody keeps patting themselves on the back that there's been a reduction in the landfill usage since then, but they're more anecdotal, not numbers wise. And we were throwing a lot of numbers around when we were spending millions of dollars. Finally, I, I want to say, as important as those first two items are, it seems like we continue to circle back to liquor bills. And I'm not sure why. Councilman, our Vice President Merritt, Councilman Holloway and Councilwoman Shields, I'd like to thank you for not going along with the, with this so far. And I know it's not across the finish line. But Josh, you were very concerned about some of the, the guardrails put up, but I'd like to ask, how can you actually trust this? We saw this when we dropped the monopoly on the, on the liquor dispensary, that there were last minute submissions. Vice President Merritt, I'm sure you remember those very well. I'd like to ask you to reconsider. Councilman James Winn, I know you're a man of faith. I'd like to ask you, how does the churches feel about this type of expansion of, of liquor? And I'd like to ask Councilman Dave Ennis, what was his reasoning for going along with it? I just don't understand. We don't need to detach the Class A licenses from the restaurants. I know that our liquor laws are from prohibition. I get it. It's a system that's working for us. It's working for Montgomery County as well. I just don't think we should throw it away. By the way, been at the golf course for a couple charity golf tournaments the last couple Fridays, not once have I wanted a 7:00 AM beer.
I wasn't going to speak, but Mr. White brought up a question that I have an answer to. I've also been following throughout the year the dredging project. And I understand, I learned from, from coming means that, that we have the second busiest port in the state, which was surprising to me. So I understand how important it is to the businesses and that depend on it. So I've been watching the spoils being moved from Sharp's Point to Walnut Tree Road. And I was curious about, you know, there was this October 1st deadline and we were supposed to be dredged this year. So I took it upon myself, I called the Army Corps of Engineers and I spoke to a gentleman who's been involved in our dredging project. And I had asked him about this October 1st deadline and apparently it had already been missed. So the decision to postpone the dredging had already been made before October 1st. And I was told that it is tentatively scheduled for next October of 2026. So, you know, as a concerned citizen, understanding how important that dredging project was and learning that it hadn't been done for years, I don't understand how the ball got dropped and now we've lost another year. Thank you.
They've had enough when they get done here in me. Jim Atkins, Wacomiko County. Just a few things I, I want to touch on, just seems to be the theme here today, to go back a little bit and look at things. A few months ago, local management board was in here to get approval to have grant money accepted. One of the locations for that grant money was Poplar Hill Correctional Facility. What was ever the outcome of that? There is no Poplar Hill. Where would, where'd the grant money go? Did we accept it? Just some more things. The council may have the answers, but the public don't. Unfortunately, I have dredging on my list too. You were told four times in one meeting that the dredging had to be completed by October 1st. It wasn't done. There was a contract put out to have 100,000 cubic yards moved. Apparently that contract was not honored because they aren't completed. So in that contract, was there a penalty clause for the contractor in not having the work completed on time? Since now, we're going to be another year before we get the Wacomiko River dredged in the middle section. Liquor bills, as been stated, I certainly hope you will reconsider some of these things. I haven't heard in a council meeting, but I have heard from, from the liquor people that you're going to get $500,000 this year from the dispensaries. It's about 400,000 less than last year. That's free money, folks. It's free money. Don't keep giving it away. You're going to talk this afternoon about professional services report. I don't think that the information you're going to be given is what you asked for. It certainly is not what I was expecting to see because in going through the list of all the individuals that are being used as consultants, there are no individuals. And we all know there are individuals, and they have been stated today so far, that are being paid as consultants, but they're not in that list. Their name does not appear. So we're supposed to be getting an attorney for the ethics board. This has been going on since June. So I guess instead of waiting for a decision on ethics, I'll just file ethics complaints every year and whenever we get an attorney, he'll have something to do for a while. And I'd like to know the process of the cell tower in Cedar Hill. We were supposed to extend that 20 feet, put a rise in antenna on that so the people on the west side of the community had cell service, the fire departments had cell service. And we had to wait for the Ospreys to get off the tower. Well, the Ospreys are gone. They're back in South America now. They'll be back in April. So what's the status on Cedar Hill?
Hi. Lana Foley, Wacomiko County, city of Salisbury resident as well. At the 10-7 council meeting, it was falsely claimed that the WSO and the 287G programs make us safer by targeting serious criminals. That is simply not true. These programs don't require a conviction, just an arrest, often for minor things like traffic violations. We're told that WSO helps us keep public safety threats from returning to the streets. Our law enforcement and our criminal justice system are supposed to be already doing that. Immigration enforcement is meant to enforce civil immigration violations, which are a misdemeanor offense. How, you say, how can we want criminals on our streets? We don't. And we know by implementing this, you will make crime grow in our county. One reason is people will stop calling 911 or reporting crimes like domestic violence when local jails support ICE. WSO doesn't give us control. It gives us, it gives it away. And our residents deserve safety. It was also claimed to be budget neutral. It's not. Counties have been sued and taxpayers foot the bill. Who is paying for the 48-hour hold when we're holding them for ICE to vet these people? You said you want feedback from the community? It is not acceptable to pass this off without a vote. We elected you to lead and leadership means taking ownership, especially on something this critical. Whether you support the WSO or not, each of you should go on record. The people of Wacomiko County deserve transparency and accountability. This decision affects real lives and you owe it to all of us to stand up, to take a vote and to show us where you stand. I also don't think we need to be drinking at 7:00 AM.
Debbie Kraus, Westside, Wacomiko County. I'm here also to talk about the 287G. And we wanted to do a fact checks on a couple lies presented to the public on October the 7th. Here is the counter-truth provided by the Office of the Public Defender for Maryland, Stephanie Wolf. So here was what we were told. Here's the lie. The WSO model only helps ICE arrest those who have served sentences for serious crime. But the truth is, the WSO model only requires an arrest, not a conviction, for somebody to then be apprehended by ICE. So if you're picked up for urinating on the corner or something and taken to jail, you could be taken, you know, it's just, it doesn't all make sense. I need to stick to my script. And, and most typically, the charges are for minor offenses like traffic violations. Most of those being released from local jail have either been found innocent, gotten bail pre-trial or served a short sentence for a less serious offense. Most never see their day in court. In Frederick, 60% were for traffic violations, 60%. In Maryland, between 2016 and 2023, for every one person ICE arrested from 287G who had a conviction of a level one serious crime, 115 had no conviction whatsoever, but they were taken by ICE. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robin Cook and I'm a resident of Wacomiko County. Lie, the community is misinformed. This is not the task force model, which would make police act like agents in the street. Truth, we are not misinformed. We know this is not the street model, but even that WSO model, which is based in the jail, causes a lot of the same problems. It has proven to be an incentivize for racial profiling and funneling more people into ICE custody by being booked at the jail on minor offenses. Thank you.
Good morning. Robert Taylor, Wacomiko resident. I'm going to change the subject. I'm going to change it to what you all did a few minutes ago on this planning and zoning commission matter. As you all know, September the 1st was the end date for our old joint city-county planning commission. It's all over. It's gone. Planning commissions are in Maryland or controlled by state law. That actually governs, not the local law. And they have to be set up legislatively. Now, that has happened since September the 1st or effective that date, both the... Both the city and the county have established new commissions. They're not the same anymore. And this council cannot buy an MOU or the county by agreeing to an MOU, change that. It would have to be done legislatively. So what you've done is facilitate something that is going to be unlawful if it happens. And that would be the county's board commission acting for the city. Can't have that. The city's commission has to be appointed by the city. So it's bad policy, what you've done. Mr. Benson sees a potential risk, as do I. That can't be covered, I don't think, by what you all did by trying to put lipstick on the pig. You can't insulate yourself against your own negligence, and that's what would happen if this goes forward. Now, changing the subject again, let's get back to 287G, my views on it. And I'm not opposed to people who are serious criminals being removed from the county. I don't care whether they're aliens or whether they're card-carrying U.S. citizens. If they're serious criminals, get them out of here. But what needs to be done with 287G? Now, at the last meeting that I watched, the guy from ICE was on the big tube there for a number of minutes, going back and forth with you all in that work session. I don't recall him ever saying that ICE, right now, can't handle the people who are incarcerated that they might want to then retain for ICE reasons. So if they don't need the help, why get into it? And if they, and a couple reasons not to. First of all, the Attorney General this past week came out with a lot of guidance for this. It's long, I haven't read it, and I'm not going to get into it. We also know almost for ironclad fact that there's going to be legislation in Annapolis next year to outlaw any local agreements with ICE. Seven states already have this. Delaware just did it a few months ago. You can't have an ICE agreement in Delaware. So that's going to come up again. So why, if they don't need the help now, why don't we wait to see what's happened and wait until they come in and say, "We just can't handle all those people in the jail. You gotta help us." They haven't done that. Don't do anything.
I wasn't sure I was going to talk, but what he just said is, I just wanted to highlight my concern about 287G. The 48-hour hold is where my mind has a lot of questions. If you are arrested, you are not a criminal. We don't know. You have been arrested, you have not had your day in court. If you're allowed to hold them an additional 48 hours, is that really? Don't they have, I don't know that we have the right to do that. I don't know that it's fair. If someone has been picked up for something, some people say it could be something very small, you know, one night in jail is a big deal. Like, these people, the people are just like us. If I was removed from my house for two days, it might not matter. I don't have little kids. I'm not caring for an older person. I'm not the breadwinner in the house. But taking someone for an additional two days, you really need to think about that. Some people are single parents. Some people are the only working person in the house. They haven't been convicted of a crime. And I'm not against, I'm not against, like you said, deporting serious criminals and things like that. It's not that we're against it all. It's just we have to be careful on how we do things and make sure that it's fair and make sure that we're defending people's civil rights. Thank you.
Patricia Melvin, District 7, Waukesha County. Thank you again for the time to address you folks. Over the course of my career, when I was a working person, I dealt with federal agencies. Initially, FDA, OSHA for the rollout of Right to Know, EPA, I was sending, signing paperwork to send hazardous waste across state lines, so I got to deal with the EPA. Later, USDA, policy folks, and a little bit of FTC. And the reason, nobody else wanted to do that, so I got the chance to, to be the contact. But you deal with these agencies to get something back, like the Army Corps of Engineers. We get dredging, Social Security, in my case now, get something back. This agreement with ICE, we would get nothing back. We could get some negative things back. Jim, Mr. Atkins had mentioned something about a transportation clause in the agreement. So I went and looked at the actual form, because it is a boilerplate form. And the ICE form that's signed by all the other new counties in Maryland, like Garrett, Allegheny, Carroll, that form was developed February of 2025. We are the only county that's using the new form, and if you look in the bottom corner, it's dated June 2025, and it has that extra paragraph about transport. So it would be interesting, I know ICE will not answer the question, a direct question like that, but why was that added? You know, they don't add stuff like that for fun. We will be transporting. That's why it was added. Lastly, these agreements, you're not equal parties. The county would be a subordinate party in this agreement. Thank you.
All right. Morning, Kensington Raymond. So I resigned in Waukesha County, and I'm someone that believes that the community is stronger when we stand together. At the last meeting, we heard the county executive and the attorney present the WSO model, and it was said that it cannot move forward without a vote from council. And some says that the decision should be fall back on the executive, but this is not a small matter. It affects everyone that leaves and works and pray here in Waukesha County. Us, the people, we deserve a clear answer, and that means if we have to, we need to get a public vote, not just to remain silent or delay it. We must vote on it if we need to, and we urge you, or I urge you, to vote no. Even though it's called a WSO model, it's still ICE partnership. We heard promises that might be cost-neutral, free of cost, 48 hours hold, but we know that will not be respected. Let's ask the real question. If ICE has a bad track record in other counties, what would make Waukesha County believe that it will be different? Who pays the time, the time for the time, the training, and the risk that these officers will be taking? If ICE holds or houses these individuals for beyond 48 hours and something goes wrong, who pays for the responsibilities, the county or the ICE? And most importantly, what message that this sent to the immigrant families that already contribute to this county and live here and consider this place as home? All right. I know that possibly each and every single one of you serve the public because you care about the county, whether it was God by faith, by family, or simply doing the right, what's right. But truly leadership is not doing what's popular, it's by doing what's fair and more, especially when people's life will depend on it. So we all here, we all want safety, but not built on fear and division, not just real safety. Citing, citing the WS agreement, give ICE a key to the county, and that allows them to operate beyond what they're already doing. ICE is already here. They have a local office. Okay? So this is agreeing with them and signing and showing that we agree with what they're doing all over across the county. And when we talk about illegal immigrants, let me remind you that all these immigrants that do come to this country, they seek the proper way. They came through a legal channel, but the current administration revoke multiple of these legal statuses, causing them to be illegal immigrant, or what we call them criminals. But they are not criminals. They came to seek a better life, but you decided to revoke their legal statuses, making them illegal.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Brooks. I'm a Waukesha County resident, and I'll put on my resident hat first. The liquor dispensary, which, I'm going to have two hats on that one. I think, and I'm going to direct this, I was very surprised about this, this interest and focus on this dispensary thing and how this keeps coming up, like. And, and I think, for you, Councilman Nguyen, I, I was very surprised that you supported the 7:00 AM drinking in the same evening when you had all of these people talk about the great man of God you are, and it came to support you about prayer and all of that. I don't believe God is pleased with that. And that's just me as an individual, that is me, not NAACP hat, but I, I thought you would be embarrassed to have said that same legislation. And I already, I caught Josh in the hallway, and I said the same thing to him. How could you even support such a thing? I think it's absolutely asinine and ridiculous. And any of us who've been to these golf tournaments, which I've been to many, people look for an opportunity to be sloshed up, I mean, just drunk as a skunk, driving these carts. It's a hot mess, but now we're going to move that on up to 7:00 AM. All right, switching over. For, as an individual and for NAACP, we are continuing to not support this information about the liquor licensing and expanding that. Again, I don't know why you want to give away free money that you're given. We've gotten up to $1 million, I believe, from the dispensary and how the public in general is not supportive of this opening up the floodgates. We, the citizens deserve better, so that it seems like this is something that is maybe some sort of, we don't know, backdoor deals, quid pro quo? I don't know. It makes no sense. But for 287, as I've said to, as I've mentioned before and to some of you I've reached out to, I'm going to be reaching out to everyone, this particular situation, while the information is saying this is going to be free to the county, that's not true. I do not, I don't even know why we would even remotely believe that. When the ICE guy was here on the, on the screen, there are questions that you all brought up that he could not even answer. He didn't know. The ICE agreements are open-ended. We know here with the county executive, anything over the, the year has to be approved by council. We want council to approve, to, to, to make a vote, to not approve this process. We want it to be transparent. We want to know, because the county executive can just go ahead and sign it, but we want you all to, to not support this legislation. If one of these ICE agents, in conjunction with our people, and we're in this agreement, snatch a woman who has a baby in her hand, that baby dies, who's going to pay for that? You all. Any of these liabilities, you think the federal government is going to cover you and let their attorneys protect Waukesha? They could care less about Waukesha. They just care about increasing their numbers. So I'm telling you, be fiscally responsible, not in the same way this council was not fiscally responsible when they gave all that money to Sheriff Lewis and his Taj Mahal.
Are you both done? See none. Council comments.
Well, I will say, I want to acknowledge the ridiculous things as far as the liquor issues that, I don't know why we keep getting liquor bills and stuff coming back every year. Obviously, folks shouldn't be drinking. We don't need more of that. But I don't see, personally, I don't see, you know, I'm not going to, we're not going to stop the, the tide of alcoholism by changing an hour or two on a golf course for a tournament. So I don't, I don't feel strongly on that. But I do want to make sure that we clarify the understanding as far as, first of all, all liquor bills are done at the state level, not at the local level. And I personally don't ever want to see any addition of any new licenses, and nothing that the council has gone over will change that. So just for clarity, I want to make sure that's clear, I guess, that part. But I also want to also acknowledge Charles Otto, who is, who passed away this past week. I got to know him much more, I knew of him, I knew, we knew of each other. He'd worked in agriculture, and, you know, my family's background in agriculture, and I knew, he was just a great guy that I generally knew of, but I got to know him a lot better 15 years ago, when we were working on our, I was actually the field director for Jim Thies' state senate campaign. And so it was really great to join him in going, as he was first running for delegate. You know, we'd go to cow pie throwing contests and other, and other random things that would be held, other events around the entire lower shore. And, but I think what really stood out to me with regard to delegate Otto is that he was just, would always show up no matter what, even when districts were changed on him and he was no longer representing a certain area, he would still show up to the meetings in that area, just because he still cared. And so I really did appreciate that as a public servant. And he, no matter what the politics have played, which, you know, many times we may not agree on certain issues, on politics side of things, but, but he always had a good heart and a good eye towards, you know, towards the eastern shore and towards, especially supporting natural resources and agriculture. So I just want to acknowledge he was a great human being and his, I think his, Mr. President, if you're going to announce as far as when his funeral will be, I think it's this Friday at 11 o'clock in Prince's Anne, and then there will be a viewing on Thursday night.
Thank you, Josh. Joe?
Yeah. I guess I'll answer Josh's question that he asked, why did they keep, liquor bills keep appearing? It's because people keep voting for them. That's the main reason. And we can't blame, excuse me, they can't blame the state on changing the liquor bills because they would not do anything unless they got letters of support from the county council. And that's, that's one of the reasons that keeps happening. You know, I caught a little grief about the way I talked and commented to the people at the liquor control board at the last meeting. I had somebody call me and, and, you know, said I was rude. Well, they were, my feelings are, they're not, they're, they're not charged with lobbying. They're charged with issuing licenses and making sure the people that had the licenses followed the law. If the people that wanted these laws changed, they're the ones that should have been at the table. It shouldn't have been somebody spending taxpayers' dollars, and they were, they were issuing taxpayers' dollars to their attorney when they were up here. So that's where I'm at on that. So the seven o'clock thing is, is kind of, kind of funny. I had a lady, we were talking the other day, she said her and her husband play golf, and they play on the weekends, and they always try to play early because neither one of them drink, and they don't care to be around people that are drinking. So she says, so I guess now we've got to watch and see what's happening on the golf course at seven o'clock in the morning now. So anyway, I said this before, I thought seven o'clock drinking was reserved only for fishermen. But anyway, I guess now people at golf can drink at seven, too. I'd like to applaud the gentleman for doing his research and contacting the Army Corps of Engineers directly rather than trying to get the information off of social media or one of those other not-so-reliable sources. So I encourage any citizens to do your research. If something is really important to you, dig down and follow, follow the facts, because you'd be surprised where it takes you. I wasn't going to talk about the liquor stuff, but it keeps coming up. People are going to drink on the golf course at 7:00 AM, whether they're legally served or they carry it in their golf bag. I don't agree with it. If you want to know what the impact of some of the things that we do regarding liquor is, talk to somebody who's been directly impacted by a drunk driver. That might change your mind. Halloween's coming up. Everybody be safe. There's kids running the streets, crossing the streets, walking along the streets. So I think it's a Friday night this year, next Friday. So be safe. That's all I got.
I think everyone knew the last meeting, how I felt about 287G. I would never, ever vote for something like this. I would never, ever vote for something like this. I'm against ICE, period. I'm against military coming into cities. You look at the towns and the states and the cities, this past weekend, 7 million people came to oppose ICE, oppose militarization. I, when I'm sitting behind this desk, for many years I sat out over there, I tried to think the way the average citizen thinks. I'm a mother, grandmother, and a great-grandmother. And if my, if I was a foreign person, I would be so scared that I would get a call that my grandchildren were snatched from their mother or their father and put in cages, not knowing where they are. And if you look at the mass killings in this country, it's not the immigrants just doing this. Just look at the news, look at true crime. Not saying some, not saying all of them are done that way, but look at the recent mass killings in the synagogues, the attempted assassinations and these things, they're not immigrants. And people should have the due process. And you should not be considered illegal because you get a traffic ticket. I do not think that's right. I think we should treat people the way we want to be treated, I've always said that. And, and I think it's totally frightening and the only way we can stop it is through the voting. You vote against this irregardless, if you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, or whatever, you got to stop this because one day what's gonna happen, your freedom may be gone. And I might not live to see it, but they keep on doing this because that's what they want to do. My granddaughter's caught up in the shutdown, she's working without pay, those kind of things. And when you see people having, we're paying the, the House of Representatives to do their job and this took a five-week vacation with pay. These kind of things are not fair. So remember, when, next year, you take your voting seriously. And about this liquor, I'm sick of hearing about it. Because I'll never, ever vote about liquor. It shouldn't even be on the agenda. We have enough beer and wine stores in this county, we have enough liquor stores in this county, and yes, I believe that if someone's selling liquor, they should not, they should have a restaurant either near them or they shouldn't open it up. I'm not gonna support nothing like that, I'm not gonna change it. Now, the other council members vote, that's on their conscience and soul, but I'm not voting for 287G or any more liquor, I don't, I'm tired of hearing about it. That's all I got to say.
The comments?
I've got a suggestion. Listening to some of my fellow council members, should we pass a resolution stating there will be no further liquor bills presented to the county council for the next two years? I'm being facetious, folks, I know it's not gonna happen, okay.
First of all, I'm glad to have everybody coming out. Good to see a lot of people who are actively involved in county politics, county government. And we will answer your questions. There were quite a few good questions that were asked, whether it was in reference to the dredging or the landfill or any other two or three topics, I, we will review that, make note, and get back to you so that you have an answer to those questions on where we are in those processes. For everyone's information, as Josh had suggested, Delegate Otto, the viewing will be this Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. That will be at the Henman Funeral Home on 11673 Somerset Avenue. The actual funeral itself will be held Friday at 11:00 AM and the, that's, that's where the service will be, the internment will follow, and that will also be at the Henman Funeral Home at 11673 Somerset Avenue, so just so you're aware of that. Last week, Jeff, Vice President Merritt and I had the opportunity to meet with some members of the Haitian community at their invitation, and we met with Pastor Toussaint. If you're familiar with any portion of the Haitian community, you know what hard work Pastor Toussaint is doing in that community, very, very hard-working gentleman. We also met with Samson and we met with Mr. Raymond, who spoke today and is sitting in the back. So I, I think it was a good exchange. I think this is a case where, I don't know, I don't see where we're all going to eventually agree on everything. I still have a really strong position right now that I, I'm concerned about the, the information and making sure that we get the proper information because from my perspective, I think a lot of the issues are conflated between what we're, what the media is discussing about ICE as a whole and the fact that ICE is gonna go in and take people out of their homes, et cetera, and what 287G represents specifically. And that's really, I think, the distinction that this council's gonna have to make, you know, in the very near future. It's been suggested, and I think rightfully so, that the council should take a position on this. I think it's also important that we get an understanding, a full understanding of what the executive's position on this is. And I say that because at our last work session, we specifically asked the gentleman from ICE, what is the council's role? And his answer, if I remember correctly, was the council does not have a role. So that is a determining factor. The public wants to know what we think because we represent you. I have no problem expressing that, and I don't think the council has any process, I mean, problem expressing that as individual members. So whether it's a vote or whether it's just simply a consensus, you will hear from the council members as to what we feel, where we feel, where, what our position is on this situation. In regard to liquor, probably a few are not gonna like this either because I am in favor of what's been done so far. I don't see why you have a restaurant, why you have to say, there needs to be a restaurant if you're gonna sell, issue a Class A license. It's relatively irrelevant. People who buy beer, wine, and liquor, for the most part, especially the liquor, aren't gonna sit down and eat anyway. So I think it's a very antiquated bill, I think it's time just to remove it. It's been, it's been very onerous for those who have to abide by that. I mean, if you want to have a liquor store, you don't necessarily, you should not necessarily have to worry about your restaurant license as well. I just don't see where the two have any purpose anymore. The 7:00 AM golf, I don't know how, how relevant that is, that you have to drink at 7:00 AM. I golf, I don't drink. And 7:00 AM, 9:00 AM, and I, but I do know from being exposed to that environment, I don't feel personally that it's, it adds any increase or creates any more, any much of a greater hazard whether you change it to six or whether it's 10. I just don't see where that's gonna be a great impact on the, on the community as a whole, and I, I try to be very careful about that. The one thing I can say, which I believe Josh had stated, was it, or Joe, there will not be more liquor stores. Whatever we decide, there will not be more liquor stores. And if there were, that would have to go to the state level and your eastern shore delegation would be involved in that debate as well. So I don't see that happening for, I don't see that happening, period, in Mykoma County. Outside of that, outside of being able to visit with members of the Haitian community, we also, I also went to the Beer Festival. I didn't drink any beer, if you want to know. And I don't know if it's starting two hours earlier or not, but I know it was a really good time. There are a lot of people there, it was a very well-run event, everyone was very respectful, you don't have a bunch of crazies running around knocking into each other. So it was a very good event, very respectful event, and I'm glad to see there was good attendance because that's always a really positive, a very positive resource for Mykoma County. Also attended a retirement of Sergeant Taylor, who was with the Corrections Department for 25 and a half years. That was a really nice event for Sergeant Taylor and for his family, and we did give him a proclamation. And my wife and I attended the Beth Israel Congregation, they had their 100th anniversary gala. So we went there and we, we gave them a proclamation as well, congratulating them on their, their 100th anniversary. So it's a lot of tradition there and they're very proud of that, so we were glad to be able to be a part of it. So, that being said, I'll move over. This is a long adjournment. Entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions followed by a closed work session in accordance with the general provisions, Article, Section 3-305B7 and 9 as follows. To receive legal advice on the current collective bargaining interpretation issues as they relate to the pension, as the council has legal questions concerning interpretation of the CBA and pension plan, which require advice from legal counsel, and to discuss matters that relate to negotiations for the collective bargaining agreement, which will have a direct and material bearing on the conduct of the negotiations in order to protect the council's collective bargaining strategy. That's your motion.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Meeting's adjourned. We're reconvening as the Mykoma County Council for October 21st, 2025. Entertain a motion from council to reconvene in the legislative session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried. We are now reconvening in legislative session, Mykoma County. Ms. Hurley?
Yeah, so before you use Resolution Number 197-2025, this is our bond award resolution. In the briefbook was a template resolution that had some lines in it until the bond award was held today, that has now been concluded, and we have Mrs. Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, and Jen, I believe, with Bolton.
Davenport.
Davenport.
Okay. Yes, welcome.
Do you want to put, you made a motion to put it on the floor?
No, sorry, you're, you're, you're really good. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 197-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, thank you.
Okay, okay, so now that it's on the floor, so I wanted to answer real quickly, there were two questions that came out of the last meeting about debt limit and how that's calculated. So our debt limit is $311 million and change, I'm not gonna do all the change, but based on, with this bond issuance, we will be at about 56% of usage of that debt limit. Our outstanding debt will be $174 million and change after this debt issuance. So again, that's about 56%. The way our debt limit is calculated, we utilize 3.2% of the assessable base for our real property and we use 8% of our assessable base for our personal property. You add those two numbers together, that comes up with our debt limit, and that's how it is set up in our regulations. So today's bidding, I'm very happy to say, in of the four years that I have, or actually five issuances, this will be my fifth, that we have done, other than the COVID year, which was under 2%, this is the best interest rate we have gotten. We beat last year, not by a lot, but we beat last year, and we had the highest number of bidders that we have ever had. We had 18 bidders to bid on our debt. I asked Jen at the beginning of the day, what was the estimate for our debt interest rate? When we started this process back in July, the estimate was 4.18%. This morning, our estimate was 3.7%. We got 3.52%. So we beat estimate and we are lower than the last, 22, we got 3.93, 23, we got 4.33, and 24, we got 3.56, or 55. So we beat the last three years and this is tax-exempt borrowing that we are doing. And so with that, the actual original number that we thought we were gonna borrow was 17,015, and we're only going to have to borrow 16,690,000. I know it's only a little bit down, but still, all of that interest rate savings helps us, or all of that numbered coming down as a principal amount helps us on interest, and as such, we are able to borrow less at a favorable interest rate.
How much has our debt gone up in the past? You've been here for five years, four years, how much has our debt gone up?
I don't have that in front of me, but in looking at our payoff terms that we have had, we have stayed at a relatively consistent payoff number when we've gone to the market each year because of us continuing to make payments. So I, I don't-
We've not doubled our debt in the past five years or anything?
No.
Okay. I know we were making a concerted effort to pay it down for a while.
So there was a period of time prior to my arrival that we hadn't done some issuances in a while, and then we have done issuances. So my arrival, we did a band bond was the first thing, and that wasn't actually going out to market, but that was in, I believe, like January, February of 2021. We went to a private entity to help us with that, to borrow that. Then when we went to the market in fall of 2021, we were able to refinance all of that, and that's actually some of the debt that we are able to refinance at less than 2%. So we, we refinanced the 2021 band bond and the additional borrowing that we did in 2021 at the less than 2%. And then since then, we have been able to keep our interest rate right around, right around 4% or less. So again, our, our budgeting helps us, our conservative nature, our ability to maintain our, the, the growth in our fund balance has helped us. The, the growth in the number that we are, we have in our pension is helping us as a percentage to our liability, the fact that we are fully funded on our OPEB. Those are all things that the market likes to see. And again, last year we had 10 bidders, this year we had 18. So again, our debt is attractive to the market, and I think that's why as well, we, we were able to get such a favorable interest rate. And really, the interest rate range went from 3.52 to 3.86. So even that beat, the, the whole range was less than what we originally expected to borrow.
To answer the question back in 2021-
I'm Charles Schmeckel, Deputy Finance Director. Back in 2021, the indebtedness, we were at 162 million.
So we've gone up $12 million.
So you mentioned, thank you, Charles, appreciate that. You mentioned our, our fund balance are set aside, how, from a viewpoint of an account, a finance manager, how important is that to keep a healthy fund balance?
So keeping it a healthy fund balance is very important. I, at the level that we have it at, our continued methodology of only using it for capital projects is the methodology we need to continue to show to the market. If we start trying to use our fund balance to balance operations, that's where the market is gonna start having, that's called a structural deficit. That basically means you're taking in less than you're paying out in regular, everyday expenses. So the fact that we have that and have it at a healthy number and that we show the market that each time we are spending it, we're only spending it on capital projects, I think is, is playing a role in, first off, the fact that last year we got upgraded by one of, so all three agencies were either a double A plus or what is, what is-
A double A1.
Double A1. One of them calls it double A1 and two of them call it double A plus. So the fact that they're all three at that level means that, again, they view our debt as very, or less risky. That is basically what that means to the public, and that's why-
In other words?
Yeah, it's secure, that we have the funding available to continue to make payments and thus the entities that are bidding on this are going to get repaid. Yep. And if I may, those high credit ratings that Ms. Olin was speaking about, they really help in driving, you know, the competitive interest rate that you, you got today, so it plays a very important role.
Ms. Hurley, as it is prepared here, this is not required for amendments, is my right?
No, because it was put on your table before it was introduced.
Understood. Very good. All right, any other questions for anyone? All those in favor of Resolution 197-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Miguel.
It's time to entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session, go into an open work session, followed by a closed work session in accordance with the general provisions, Article, Section 3-305B7 and 9 as follows. To receive- To receive legal advice on the current collective bargaining interpretation issues as they relate to the pension as the council has legal questions concerning the collective bargaining agreement and the interpretation of the CBA and pension plan, which require advice from legal counsel, and to discuss matters that relate to negotiations for the collective bargaining agreement, which will have a direct and material bearing on the conduct of the negotiations in order to protect the council's collective bargaining strategy.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, meetings adjourned. First item on the work session agenda is discussion with Chop Tank Electric Cooperative on broadband. Glad to have you all here. It has been a while.
It's good to see you all again.
If you could introduce yourselves from left to right, so that the public is aware.
Sure. I am Valerie Conley, Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Relations for Chop Tank Electric Cooperative.
Leroy Sverduk, Vice President of Engineering and Operations for Chop Tank Electric.
Both here. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you for having us down again. My understanding is you wanted a little bit of an update on what we're doing on broadband, and specifically on the DSP grant, which is the latest round of investment from the state. I just wanted to briefly point out, I had sent around a fact sheet. The one side is a little bit of information about Chop Tank Electric Cooperative, the electric distribution entity, and then the backside of it has some statistics about Chop Tank Fiber, which is our wholly owned subsidiary. It's the business that we created in 2020 to be able to provide internet broadband service on the eastern shore. The business model was specifically designed to serve the unserved. So we went to the hardest to reach places and the most rural parts of the county first to find folks who didn't have any other option. We leveraged funding from county and state governments, a lot of that through the ARPA programs, ARPA grants that were out there. And at this point, Chop Tank has passed more than 13,000 homes and businesses on the eastern shore. We have accounts in seven of the nine counties that we have electric service in, and specifically here in Wycomico County, we have passed a little over 16,000. I think we have 1675 locations in the county. I think there was a map also that was added to your book for today, and on that map, we pointed out, so generally, the solid areas of green are the one, is the area that we were granted in the FY23 grant program from the state of Maryland, and we had some funding to do that. It was a 50, actually, I think it was, we paid 60% and the state paid 40-some percent for us to construct those projects. And then on that same map, there's some blue areas, which I think were constructed areas that we.
Those are the DSP.
They're the DSP areas, and then the little red dots are the specific addresses in the DSP. So that is difficult-to-serv program. It was originally referred to as the Long Lane Program. That grant was issued in, well, was finalized with an MOU in 2025. I think the money was issued in late 2023, early 2024 to the county. The county had to apply and was eligible for $1.1 million in grant assistance to help connect people who either got passed up by other ISPs or were still out there. That grant, again, began as a program that the county was going to implement, but then in every county involved, it was difficult for people to self-identify to the county grant coordinator to try and leverage the money. And so the Office of Statewide Broadband worked directly then with Chop Tank and other ISPs, as well as with the county, to try and use as much of that $1.1 million and serve as many people as possible, because there was some recognition that this might be the last opportunity to have some real grant money to close the gap. And so we worked with the county and the Office of Statewide Broadband, and we were able to make a bid and be awarded another 190 locations, I think, for the DSP. So those are the, it doesn't look like 190 red dots, and I did ask engineering to be sure they were all covered. They're in there, a lot of them are clustered together in areas, but there will be 190 additional locations served as we construct this last grant. When it was originally put out there, it had to be concluded by December of this year, but because it took a while for the Office of Statewide Broadband to actually close the granting process, they've extended that deadline to the end of September 2026. We have committed to be there in that timeframe, and as we have in all of our other grants, we usually are well ahead of schedule. And we'll open areas as we get them constructed, so we're not going to wait to the end of the grant period to then open up service. As soon as we have it constructed, we will open it for those potential customers. I guess one other note I wanted to make, too, was that, so while we have 1,675 locations that we are already offering service to in the county, and a lot of that is over on the west side, but again, that was an area that was very unserved at that point, we have 702 active customers. That's a 43% initial take rate, which is a little bit surprising, but it is the national average, but in an area where there was no other option to, that only 42% or 43% of people take service initially, is a little bit surprising, but we have found as the grants or the grant period moves further and further away from the initial offering, that number ticks up, because people either close out a satellite contract that they have, or somebody new moves into the residence, and every location that we pass has the ability to initiate broadband service right at the end of their driveway or their lane. So we expect that number will go up over time. Anything add right now, Leroy?
We've currently, under the red dots there, we've currently have all of our high-level design complete. We've started field engineering. You're going to see our field engineers running around flagging and staking on that. Once that's done, you'll start seeing crews in the area doing make-ready and starting the installation. So I think you should see shovels in the ground quite soon in small areas, and then that translating out across.
Question?
Yep.
So I'm the last person on DPNL on my next-door neighbor, which is probably an eighth of a mile away, is on Chop Tank. So your competitors, I guess you call them your competitors, Talky, they come down the road, they go past my house and go past, keep on going past my neighbors. So is there any overlapping service with Chop Tank and Talky?
Um.
Will you be going down that road due to the fact, you serve electric to that?
Yeah, and we're not, we're not restricted to just where our electric service is. When we've done our bidding and tried to identify grant locations and grant areas, we've had to use the FCC map that identifies individual households or businesses that don't have any broadband service available. So that's, there are several other companies out there besides, you know, the one competitor that you mentioned. There are a few others out there that do have service in the county. And so if you're saying you don't have any service.
No, I'm not talking about me. I'm talking about him. He's got Talky in front of his house now, and he's serviced, the electric service comes from Chop Tank.
Okay.
So will he have the opportunity to either get broadband service from you or Talky, or will you not go there?
I guess it depends how close it is to our other builds, because it doesn't often make sense to overbuild where someone else has just put a lot of broadband construction in, because if we're only getting a 43% take rate when there was no other option, if we overbuild it and then end up with a 10% take rate, that is a significant investment that might not be recovered, so.
The reason I ask that is we, or I have had questions in the past, specifically about Comcast, why people don't have a choice, you know, other than Comcast in a lot of areas, so that's.
At some point, we do anticipate that our business will continue to build. We'd love to hear from you about specific locations. Leroy is always willing to look on maps and figure out how we might be able to get to different locations.
Generally, we've taken the, taken the stance that if somebody does not have a quality connection offered to them, those are where we have been going to start with. Over time, that will definitely morph, and as we install electric lines or have opportunities to construct in areas, you know, you'll definitely see that expand, but initially, we are chasing those that are either unserved or underserved.
I thought that when the first series of grants went out, Talky was awarded that, and they were to address the east side of the county.
So you're speaking of the Ardauf grant, then, that they got from the FCC?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the second, the second grants that went out, they were awarded to Chop Tank, and that responsibility, I assume, was for the west side of the county.
Our FY23 grant, yes, was primarily, you know, it's that big green area on the west side of the county, because it was listed as unserved, and nobody else had received a grant to do that area, so we were allowed to bid for that, and we won that grant.
So in light of what Joe was saying, it seems like there are also some green areas on the east side. And are you saying that the blue areas and the red dots are areas that you were planning to service, or you've already?
They're part of this DSP grant. So the blue areas are the landmass in the area where the red dots are. All of that will be served under this DSP grant.
And Chop Tank has the authority?
Yes.
To do that?
Yes.
So you started, you started moving around more than just being isolated to one?
Well, and what OSB, the Office of Statewide Broadband asked us, they sent us the list of every single address in the county that they thought was unserved, and asked us to bid on whether or not we could serve it based on where our infrastructure was and what we believed the cost would be. And so we looked at whether we had broadband infrastructure nearby, and whether or not we had electric infrastructure in that area to be able to leverage that to make those connections.
Which is fine, however they want. I've always found it really amazing, it happened from day one, that the council, the county or the council as a whole never had any input on how, I think the first year we did. There was a little bit, and then I think the state kind of abandoned it and says, no, we're just going to figure this out ourselves.
I think so. I think what they, early on, they asked counties to do letters of support for internet service providers.
Exactly.
And some counties wanted to select which one in different areas. Other counties just said, we're giving a letter to anybody that's willing to apply. So I think it maybe then became less useful to the state to have letters of support if they were going to just support everybody for every application, but.
I understand. Now, on the very tip, on the, on the west side of the county, where it's not green at all, is that something that is already being served in some other fashion?
Down at the bottom point?
Yes.
So that, that's mostly served by Comcast.
So is that right?
Yeah, Comcast runs all the way down there to the very end. There, through that area, they actually bypass a significant portion that runs through the green part, which, you know, is some of the reason that, you know, people were frustrated in that middle section, because there were not enough houses for them to serve in the middle, but then they went all the way down there to the towns at the end.
Is there a trunk line, or Maryland Broadband's trunk line that got them there?
Maryland Broadband, I don't, I don't know the timeline on that, because Maryland Broadband brought a fiber trunk line down through there in an attempt to, you know, give some competition and sort of create some opportunities, and then we have leveraged off of some of Maryland Broadband's trunk line, and also where some of our electric assets were already down through there.
Okay, so I'm guessing really that the green areas were very sparse.
Yeah, it's very sparse.
Much more, I'm assuming, I guess it was much more consolidated as you got further southwest.
Tuyascan, Nantacoke, all of those areas down there, you know, there's a lot more density down there.
I understand.
Comcast ran their lines down there, and then they proceeded to hook up off of those.
Okay, good. Well, I'd say, I'm glad you came in, because I had no idea that you were now expanding out over to the portions that were needed in the east side as well.
Generally, we are able to, we are able to leverage if we have electric assets that run by, and, you know, we've been installing fiber to connect our equipment for quite a few years, so that we have the equipment talking back into our SCADA system and, you know, keeping track of where outages are in the protection equipment. Sometimes those assets, we are able to connect off of them, and sometimes, you know, leverage out into places that it's kind of odd we can get there.
Could we say unequivocally that by December of 2026, that 95% of Wycomico County will be served?
I think so. I mean, we will have finished our project.
Yes.
I'm not sure who else got any awards in the DSP program from the Office of Statewide Broadband, but everyone contractually is supposed to be completed by September. I don't know if there'll be an opportunity for other companies to ask for an extension. We don't intend to ask for an extension. Yeah, I mean, I think the rare case will be we come into a railroad line, that has been a real headache to try and cross a railroad when we're trying to deliver broadband service, and so sometimes that will hold us up a bit, but we try to figure out other ways around if need be. And I know the state was trying to declare Wycomico County 100% served, but I think there are still some areas outside of the area we can serve that maybe are still listed as in need of service, and I think the state was trying to work out a plan to maybe do some satellite Starlink connections to folks that are way outside of any infrastructure that might be out there, but I'm not 100% sure on whether they'll be able to declare 100% of the county.
Can you get into the wireless cellphone service, please, on the west side of the county? Because we need it.
Of course.
Walking out of my.
I will say that we are not there yet, but that is definitely something that we've heard requests, and so we've got people exploring, but, I mean, we, we've been pretty, our business model has always been fiber optic, because it is just kind of the gold standard for broadband, and we wanted to make sure that we can continue to upgrade with the time, so we just have to switch out the equipment at our, at our centers, whether it's out at a, you know, any of our distribution points.
Can someone who's with Chop Tank service, can they, can they do a wireless Wi-Fi with their cellphone with Chop Tank?
Yes.
So if you're, if you're in some of these isolated areas, because honestly, if you're a little outside.
Where you don't have any cell service, yeah.
But if you're home, you could connect through your network.
You can. You could do cellular over Wi-Fi, which will give you an excellent connection for your cellphone. We also are offering mobile cell, cell plans, you know, cellular plan through Chop Tank Fiber. It's called Chop Tank Mobile. And for our customers, it's a very discounted rate, because we know that when you are home, you're going to be using it over the Wi-Fi system, the broadband system that we have installed. And so for folks that are customers, that's a good option if they're looking for a low-cost mobile plan, and it runs over the very reliable networks that are already out there that we cannot name.
Anybody, any other questions? We really appreciate, we were glad to see that you're part of this, because you are, you know, we're very glad to see that you were part of this, and this was awarded, and just never had a chance to talk to you one-on-one to see how successful it was going, but it looks, looks really great.
We really appreciate the council's effort to support.
Yes.
You know, applying for that grant, making sure that that 1.1 million came here to the county. There were a few counties out there that didn't do it, and it boggles our mind these days, but it was a really good investment or effort from the council to make sure that money is here in the county connecting people, so.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if you, if there are individual addresses that anyone has or concerns, feel free. My contact information is on the Chop Tank Electric side of that flyer. You can call my cell, or, well, you can try the toll-free, call my cell. My email's on there, too, and we're happy to look up any specific addresses or deal with any specific questions.
Yeah, and I would say again, I really, what I really appreciate is the fact that when we had clients that actually were emailing us and were questioning about their, their service across the street or not across the street, that you personally called them, and they were really glad, they were really grateful to get that information, so.
Well, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have a great day.
You, too. Next item on the agenda is the audit update. Ms. Ashley Stern here today.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just for the record, if you could.
Absolutely. Ashley Stern, PKS and Company, and I am the partner in charge of the Wycomico County Audit for Fiscal Year 2025. So we're here today to provide an update as to our status on the audit and our audit testing, as part of our kind of goal to keep council more involved throughout the audit process and provide some details. So we'll be here every so often just to give an audit update as we move towards completion of the audit. The books were closed for the county at the end of September by the county personnel, and we began our testing on the 6th of October, so just about two weeks ago. Of course, with the audit, we actually start with our risk assessment, our internal control documentation, our internal control testing, and that actually starts all over the summer. So we, we actually. So we, we actually start our testing back towards year, year end in June. So we start with documentation, we start looking at processes, procedures, controls, and all of that actually happens on the front end so as to not overwhelm the finance team with everything that we asked for during the audit. So that started over the summer. I'm pleased to state we don't have any major issues to report from our testing over the summer, but of course, the bulk of our testing does occur during this time. So all of our substantive and detailed testing, so all of our invoices that we look at, our budget testing, everything is actually occurring right now. We actually track the progress of the items that we receive from county personnel. So we have a little task bar that fills up as they give us everything that we need or everything that we've requested. And at the end, it's completely full or hopefully completely full. And at the beginning, it helps us kind of track the progress of the items that we've requested. I went ahead and compared that task bar to this time last year because I keep all that data. And I compared where we were at this time last year to where we are this time this year. And right now, as of this morning, we're actually about 30 days ahead of where we were last year in the items that we've received from county personnel, which I think is a huge, a huge step from the personnel. Now, of course, we still have to complete our testing and we still have to get to the end of the audit. And there's a few items that typically take a little bit longer for outside vendors to get those to the county. For example, your consortium numbers from the health consortium, those actually come from a third party. So we're still waiting on, on those numbers. Those are traditionally delivered in December, just to give you a heads up. But on a positive note, your OPEB valuation and your pension valuation have been completed and those weren't completed until January of last year. So we're ahead of, ahead of term on those as well. So, you know, I, I like to use the term cautiously optimistic, but I am, I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll keep on this trajectory.
So you do say in the very beginning, as far as timing and delivery, you, you stress how last year was very difficult in trying to get the information. Now, last year, if I remember, didn't we have to hire an outside accounting firm to help with our, get our finances together?
I think that was, that was the year before.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good. So now, so that's progress, right? We're not doing that.
Progress.
Okay, good, great. And I know you noted the fact that there's financial software that led to some discrepancies and took a little bit more time than usual. And the airport, will we be actually taking that out of the enterprise account and making that the governmental fund? When and where, how is, when will that transition be final?
We actually made that transition during the audit last year, which is one of the reasons why last year was so difficult. So this year, you'll actually see it as a governmental fund, so it's not an enterprise fund anymore. It's reported a little bit differently, but you'll actually see that, you, in a complete year this year.
That's what I was, yeah, good.
Yep.
Very good. And that was, from what you stated, was also part of a very time-consuming process to get that.
It is.
Good. Any questions, anyone? I took a lot of notes, but I think it's all self-explanatory.
Right.
And I don't want to, anything else that you'd like to bring out? Because I know, I know that you, you pointed out certain departments where you had said that the grant accounting, there were repeat findings there, there were repeat findings in accounts payable reconciliation, and there are numerous account, I mean, repeat findings. What's your general consensus, taking that as a large, as a total?
So, taking it as a total, I don't think we've gotten to a point where I can say, you, of those findings, half of them are, are better or not. But what I can say is, you mentioned vouchers payable. Vouchers payable, of course, because it was such an issue in the past, was the first thing we looked at this year. And I'm happy to state that we were able to get through all of our testing with that with no issues, which is a huge step. And it's actually a testament to some of the newer staff that had been retained through the finance department where they had been newer in 2024, but really gained some experience and were able to get that done this year. So we were extremely pleased from that end. You know, other areas, we do still see some areas where we'll still have some recommendations. I'm an auditor, I love recommendations, I will give them till I'm blue in the face. But we do still see some of those, but overall, we're seeing a better trend as of today.
Got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You know, we've been through the issues with the landfill. And I see here during our, you state during our audit, we noted an issue with reconciliation of permit sales resulting in a significant statement in permit sale revenue. And that's some of the numbers we were looking at when we were having our discussions. Was that, what's the word I want to say? Significant or was it not? I guess that's what I'm asking, was it?
So thinking about the numbers from 2024, there was a significant correction that needed to be made during our audit related to permit sales. If I'm remembering numbers correctly, it was north of $400,000, but.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. There was a $400,000 discrepancy?
It was, it was posted incorrectly.
It was posted incorrectly?
In the accounting, and that is why we reported that last year.
So the deposits were made.
Correct.
But it wasn't posted as far as revenue?
Yep, so if you would have pulled the revenue numbers or asked for a report on the revenue numbers, they wouldn't have been accurate because it wasn't, wasn't there.
Wasn't any evidence of money, money not being accounted or missing or anything like that?
Correct, correct.
All right. Have you noticed any, did you know, I know we've had this problem in the past of splitting invoices as far as getting, being able to purchase things that overrode the, the limit? Did you have any evidence of that?
We did our purchase card testing. We do have a couple recommendations related to our purchase card testing, but none related to the splitting of any invoices. You're, you're referencing, there's a purchase card limit where if you purchase a dollar amount over, I think it's $1,000 off the top of my head, that you have to actually go a different route to get more documentation, more approval, and it's a good internal control. And there were ways that certain departments in the past were bypassing that, but we didn't identify any of that for 2025.
That's good. When you make the statement of significant difficulties encountered during the audit, part of that does say that, you know, they, you received full cooperation, which is great. But then you go on to say that we experienced significant, significant difficulties in the performance of the audit due to delays in various account reconciliations and incomplete and inaccurately prepared audit schedules and added significantly added time and to, and to the related cost of the audit. How, how serious, I mean, it says it's a, it's a significant difficulty. So from your perspective, how do you relay that in layman's terms?
So I think where that is really evident is in the timing of the delivery of the audit. So if we're having difficulties or significant difficulties in getting reconciliations that makes sense, that we're able to audit, that we're able to make sure that there's no issues with, there's no material misstatements in your financial records, then we're able to deliver the audit faster. But if we're unable to get those, then we're not able to sign off on the audit and I won't sign off on the audit, thus a delayed delivery like you saw in 2024 and 2023.
Is that case where you may have one, one department that is slowing down the entire process?
If it's, if it's a significant department or if it's a significant matter, yes, absolutely.
So very capable, I'm sorry, you don't, John. You know, the very capable finance office, I think we have. Are you assigned one go-to person or do you have to shuffle around from one person to the other to try to get information?
We're given access to everyone, which I think is really important because if, if they only gave us one person to talk to, you know, I would be concerned. Why, why can't I talk to everybody? You know, is there something that?
Saying you should or shouldn't, not just asking.
But yeah, so we, we go mostly through Charles for all of our questions and we include various people on every email.
The guy with the laptop.
Sitting, sitting back to my right, yeah. So mostly Charles funnels through the information and oversees the progress of the audit. But of course, we do ask questions of everyone, whether it's in the finance department or other departments. But we will include Charles on those emails when we do.
Ashley, it looks like one of the repeat findings was open purchase orders. Are there recommendations? Because that, that's going to affect budgeted money if that keeps happening, so.
We actually are in the process of testing purchase orders now, so I don't have a result on that yet. But in the past, there were various purchase orders that had been left open from, from budget year to budget year, adjusting the budget and changing budgeted numbers. But, you know, we're, we haven't finished that testing yet.
Thank you. Yes, James?
Yeah. So we're, you say we're a month ahead of schedule from last year and you want to come back. I'm just curious, when, when do you plan on coming back to give us another update?
So my plan would be back sometime in November, whether it's at your first November meeting or second November meeting, just depends on what fits with the council's agenda. But we would be back about that point. Traditionally, the due date for the reports to the state of Maryland are December 31st. And we've presented at the original, or the first January meeting of 2026. As of this date, I'd expect that to be our delivery preference. So actually, we've gone all the way back to what, what has been done. But, yeah, I'll let you know in November if anything happens. I'm going to knock on wood right now.
I suppose we'll have people that's watching this and some folks in the audience that may have questions. Those questions should come through the council office to you or through the executive's office. How, how's that, how's that usually handled?
Well, if it's something that a citizen has reached out to a council person about, then normally I send them to Ashley directly.
Communicate with Ashley.
Do you want to add?
Nothing more to add, just wanted to make sure that I answered any questions that we had. Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me today.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is property tax waiver for Habitat for Humanity and Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. I know Pam is here. Andrew, I think you may be part of this.
Hameland Finance.
Andrew Illuminati, Department of Law.
I understand, I'll try to lead off to save some time. I understand Habitat seems to be a workable item in the way it's been put together. We understand we're sort of separating or being kind of loose on the definition of credit versus waiver, but I think we feel we have enough to make it sustainable and, and legal with Habitat for Humanity. We appear to be trying to put a square peg in a round hole when it comes to Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. So in having had some conversations during, over the last few days, it appears like the best route for Salisbury Neighborhood Housing might be for the council to send, if we choose to do so, to send a letter of endorsement to the state of Maryland through our Eastern Shore delegation to try to get state law changed to, to make, to have the same state statute in place for Salisbury Neighborhood Housing as is currently in place for Habitat, maybe?
So on, as a finance, the finance director, that would be better in my, in my view because it very specifically states who is allowed to have this credit or defer. In, in our instance, we're looking at a deferral. I know we're using the term credit, but they would pay it back within five years. The one piece that, I got a red line last evening and unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to read it with all the stuff going on this morning. The one, I had a couple of questions on the previous version and Andrew, you can tell me if I, you know, you guys have addressed this or not, but the one was, I know we're talking deferral credit, I'll, I'll leave the lawyers to determine what word that is.
We've agreed tax credit's fine.
Okay.
Within the context of everything else, but Mr. Benson and I were able to work through that. And so rather than muddy it, it's a tax credit, but with a deferral repayment, whereas everything else within Chapter 90 is an actual credit that they do not repay in the future.
So the piece that I had a question about was in, was in the original section C, was talking about property after five years doesn't get the credit or the deferral. This appears to be silent as to what if, I know when Habitat was here, they mentioned it's rare for them to hold something over five years. But what happens on year six if they're still working on a project? We've given them five years. Okay, they don't get any more credits and do we just hold that number or do we make them pay that then? So I, I think the language needs to be very clear that even if the five-year window is done, what happens? Do we pay, do they have to still wait for a settlement, but they don't get any more credit? Or do they have to repay it at that point in time? And I, I just want to make sure, I don't want to have, I don't want finance to have to do any interpretation.
So that was addressed when Mr. Benson and I worked on it specifically. The rewrite states the tax credit, where are you? This is in what is the new B, applicability period in terms of the tax credit. And in two, it reads the tax credit for each property shall be for no more than five consecutive tax years or upon transfer of the property. A property which was not transferred within five tax years is not eligible to receive the tax credit again. For, so it's five years and then they can't reapply for another five years. Further, upon the expiration of the tax credit, either due to a lapse in time or transferring property, here, the, the entity shall pay the full amount of taxes that accrued during the tax credit period. However, no interest on the accrued taxes shall be owed by the entity or collected by Wycomico County. So explicitly enumerated, if they don't transfer it in five years, then they owe the complete five years and that property is not eligible again.
Okay, and, and we kind of had that conversation when Molly was here and she seemed to understand that. And she, because she was, did not want to have, want to be holding the property for more than five years anyway. It was her answer.
Right. I just, I just don't want finance to have to make any kind of interpretation. So this spells it out for me. As I said, I got this last evening after I'd left and with the bond stuff this morning, I didn't get a chance to read it. So that's why I'm asking the question. So I'm, I'm good with that language. If council's good with that language.
Yeah, I guess, what, I know we're going to get the money at some point in time, apparently, but what's this going to cost, cost us to begin with over the period? If you took everything they own today and estimated what would, what would be the cost to the county or the deduction in collected taxes, I guess that's a good way to put it.
She, it wasn't a whole lot of money.
$20,000 at the most.
I mean, we don't know what we're doing, we should know.
Well, we do know.
We had it in the very first, we had it in that very first meeting. I'm just going, trying to go back to my notes. So the amount for one year of the, for the properties that are, would be tentatively eligible for this is $4,200. They're estimating for fiscal '26, it would only be $3,037 at the current tax rate per year because they have a property that is about ready to sell or has sold since this was created. So again, we're looking at, it's not a significant dollar amount in any fiscal year currently as to what they hold. I just had to go back to my notes from that meeting, but.
Did you have?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was $3,000, $3,000, $3,000 to $4,000 a year. So.
For a house, right?
No, that's in total for all of the properties that they currently own. They currently, again, when this was created, this was through 630 2025, they had 14 properties that, per their estimates, would be eligible. I did not go back and check that, but per their estimates would be eligible for this deferral tax credit. And the total value of all 14 properties was $4,201. They say one of those properties will be settling, was going to be settling soon after that. That made it $3,037.
And is that because their properties aren't improved with the structure, they're vacant lots predominantly?
Some of them are vacant lots, some of them don't have, so of the 14, her list has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of the 14 are lot ones. So again, those only have less than $100 available to them. Actually, no, I missed two. Seven, eight, nine. Nine of them are lots. They've got one, two, three, four, four that they're doing construction in progress and/or just need a minor rehab. And then that fifth one was the one that they were working. And then that fifth one was the one that they were working on selling, and that was the one that had the highest value at $1,100.
Seems almost, to me, it seems almost insignificant, but, you know, when, when they tell us that anything would help, and it helps them with their cash flow, help them, we can do it.
So, again, most of them, most of the 14 are lots, so don't have a significant dollar amount on them.
There is a clause in here that if it gets reassessed with the property improvements, then that would also be taken into account.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, the amount is based on the current assessment in any fiscal year associated with this. So, it, so if they get a reassessment on the lot, the reassessment on the lot will, the value, so, you know, whatever their bill was for the first year, based on what's there, and then if it gets reassessed, that, and, and a new tax rate, whatever the new tax rate is. So, it does not hold a tax rate or a value static in this legislation. It just lets the bills not have to be paid with interest or penalties for five, up to five years.
Feel comfortable with finance department's tracking processes?
On a level, on this level, yes.
Okay. Additionally, we were able to, if you recall, with the Horizon tax credit, we had that issue regarding the application process. We've taken the lessons learned from that and incorporated it into here so that that issue will not come again, and we were able to do that during the rewrite process.
Yeah, that was good, that was good. Does everyone feel comfortable with this as it is?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, then we can, I move forward with it. Bob?
Counsel's benefit on the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, just in Maryland, in the, in the tax property article, has a series of entities that county governments or municipalities can grant tax credits to, and there's a specific section that says you can grant one to Habitat for Humanity. Notwithstanding the fact that other governmental entities have granted Salisbury Neighborhood Housing a tax credit, there is no specific section in Maryland law that authorizes that. So, while we, I drafted a bill with Ms. Hurley's help for Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. Distinction between Habitat and Salisbury Neighborhood Housing is, the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing does not have any reference to a state authorizing section, because there isn't one. So, you know, as, as the president said, the alternative is to have the local delegation put in a bill and ask to have Salisbury Neighborhood Housing receive it. I don't know if that's what would happen, but obviously, they haven't gone into session. If it happened, that could be by, going into effect by June 30th or whatever, you could do this early next, mid next year.
So, the one thing would be, is if council, and I don't, I don't have an opinion on it one way or the other, but, so again, there's specific legislation in state law about Habitat. The question becomes, is do we want to keep going back to the state if there is another entity like Salisbury Neighborhood Housing or Habitat that are not-for-profits that do rehabilitation? Do we want to ask that the legislation allow us to offer, you know, have others apply? Or do we want to make it very specific? And I am just putting that out there for council, I don't care one way or the other.
That's a really good idea. I'm assuming we're going to piggyback possibly on the Habitat bill that's already there, and then the legislation would simply amend that to include Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, but I think also, it's a very good point, that we get out a second line.
Well, the problem is the Habitat is not merely for Wycomico County.
We would have to.
Well, however we got to do it, okay.
I suspect it would have to be a separate section.
Okay, then we could do that, but no, I think in that we should allow enabling legislation that would give us a little more flexibility.
Because again, again, you know, we don't know, do we want to keep going back every time a new entity that wants to benefit our people? So, a suggestion.
Everybody seems to be okay with that, too, trying to make that work? Cheryl Meadows is here, did you have any comments you want to make, or you're just listening, trying to see how it's going? Okay, good.
Appreciate your comments.
Great, thank you. So, we're good here, right? We can get it on the next agenda if time permits?
All right.
And we'll do everything else we have to do with the delegation for the rest of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more question. With this tax credit, and then we have tax credit for Horizon, then we have tax credits for the fire departments, how many other tax credits do we have, and what's, what's the total of these tax credits building up to now?
I don't have that answer off the top of my head. We have, we have these, we have the HEROES Act, the HEROES Act for the disabled, those who have been disabled and live in Wycomico County and were disabled in a Wycomico, I believe, I would have to go back, but I think it's a Wycomico County either fire, EMS, share, police, or correction, first responder, but that has to be, their disabling has to be something that happened in Wycomico County. So, we have that one, we have Horizon, but Horizon is only good for the one building. There is no current ability to have anybody else apply, so that one is.
Unless there's another building built.
No, you guys closed that.
It could be opened back up. Anyway, what do we have now?
So, you have Horizon, you have HEROES, and you, you would have this, and.
Fire department.
And the fire.
Fire service.
Are the ones that I can.
That's all.
You can get back to us on that.
I will look.
It's fine.
Okay, but those are the four that I can think of off the top of my head.
And keep.
That are county-based.
And this is a waiver, Joe, it's not, it's not a credit. It's listed as a credit, this is a waiver.
So, this is the only.
Temporary waiver.
These are the ones that I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sure. You can come to the podium, or you can come to the desk, whichever you choose. Just let everybody know who you are.
Cheryl Meadows, Executive Director at Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. So, would this legislation be retroactive for properties that are already in our portfolio? Or is legislation passed that only applies to properties we purchased?
So, if I, the way it's currently written, there's no waiver for going back, but if you own it at the point in time this becomes effective, your five years would start then. So, so you own it now, so again, this 14 list from Habitat, they already own all 14 of them. If this goes into effect, all 14 of them are eligible for up to five years. They don't have to buy new properties, but they don't get any back taxes.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, yeah, no, it's whatever's in your portfolio at the point in time the waiver is allowed to happen.
As of July of '26.
For the, for Habitat, it would be July of '26, it would be when, when or if we get something else.
So, the way the legislation is, is that by April 1st of every year, the application or the renewal needs to be submitted, and then finance makes a determination within 60 days. So, every year, you could acquire a new property on August 1st and then submit for the '27 tax year. And then, you know, because they're acquiring more properties, they're selling properties as they're improved, and so it's just rotating, so you could.
The April 30th deadline, though, that means that for, if Salisbury Neighborhood Housing wants to benefit for the fiscal year '26, or the year, July 2026, that may not happen, because they would not be able to apply by April 30th, because it's not going to get through the state legislature by April 30th, is it?
We're going to have to do some massaging when it comes time in the spring to get something done, but, I mean, we have the emergency bill power, we have a number of ways to make sure it can be effective in time, but let's watch and see what happens.
Now, with us, it's going to be a resolution, not a legislative bill.
No, this is a.
Am I wrong?
This is a bill.
Oh, it's a bill, okay.
Because it's going to amend Chapter 90 of the code.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, we're going to have to kind of, yeah, like, like Andrew says, it's going to be a tight fit for April 30th. Okay. With this being a limited amount and not a lot of work, would it be, could be extended beyond April 30th to make, maybe make it May? Would it still be?
So, I guess I defer to, so I'm happy, the number that, the date the application has to be made can be whatever it's, I actually misspoke earlier, I said April, it's March 1st is what's written in here, and that the, hold on, I'll just read verbatim. "The Wycomico County Finance Department shall prepare an application for the tax credit by March 1st, 2026. The application shall be posted on the county's website. The entity must apply for the tax credit under this section by submitting the completed application to the Wycomico County Finance Department by April 1st each year. The Finance Department shall determine whether a property qualifies for the tax deferral by June 1st each year and send written notice of the decision to the entity. The notice shall indicate the total amount of taxes credited to date and how many years of potential credit remain."
Can we move them to May for time to respond? Because it's somewhat inconsequential.
Well, yes and no. Again, it's only 14 properties, but my, my answer is, is starting in May is when we start working on the tax sale process. And so, our staff is incre, so us having this information, and honestly, having the information in April also helps with the budget process. I know it's tiny, but who knows if they decide to start investing more heavily, and then I do have to take that into consideration during the budget process. Right now, $4,000 isn't going to cause any budget woes, but.
Can we say, what's the deadline right now?
April 1st.
April 1st. Unless, 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 unless an extension were granted by the council.
That still goes back to me, then, not having the information potential.
We wouldn't do it unless you gave us that permission, but it gives it an out without not being there.
Mr. President, I mean, we're talking about a one-off, at least at this point. I mean, if this, if the, if the council requests the legislature to make this change, and that's going to go into process, it's going to have to be done by April 15th. You're going to know whether it's going to be enacted or not, presumably. I would hope that maybe Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, if it looks like it's going to go through, that they could beat the April 1st deadline and submit the application April 1st, and then the county has it by April 1st with the understanding.
So, what, what's.
It's March 1st.
Well, no, March 1st is when we have to post the application. The entity has to apply by April 1st, is the way this is written, if I heard Andrew write. The issue's going to be, is if we go for enabling legislation for Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, we're not going to have the period of time to be able to do the 60-day referendum period and all that by July 1st. The next language is going to have to allow us for, for this, if we really want it enacted for fiscal '27 for any entity, again, the way it's written, it will be enacted and we'll be able to follow April, April 1st for Habitat. For any other entity, we're going to have to massage the first year of inaction as to deadline and allow it to be retroactive back to July 1st and all that kind of stuff. So, I think we're putting the cart before the horse at the moment, but I think April 1st works for my department on a standard year, and Habitat would be a standard year because we're doing this ahead of time, and we're doing it now, and the 60-day referendum period would run and all that kind of stuff. If we add anybody else through legislation with the state, we're going to have to massage the language for the first year if we want it available to anybody in fiscal '27. And so, I think we just kind of see where, how that proceeds. The only other thing that popped in my brain is, we talked about this, I don't think, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's any specific language listed in here on during, yes, they're supposed to notify us in the transfer process, but I think that needs to be very, very clear, that they have to notify us on the transfer process so that we can see that it was collected during the transfer, because they say that's when it's supposed to be collected, this five-year amount. So, I just want to make sure that language is very clear. And again, I did not read this, so I'm, I'm coming in here a little blind.
Yes, I just want to make sure, understand the process. So, when somebody comes to get the deed stamped to show that all the taxes are paid, isn't internally going to be flagged as deferral, and you're not going to stamp the deed?
Well, but we're going to, we're going to try, but again, there should be a checks and balances that, hey, you as the seller, whether or not it's Salisbury Neighborhood Housing or Habitat, they really should raise their hand and say, hey, we're going to be coming to you with a deed.
I think it requires that, doesn't it?
It explicitly says that.
I think they should have to raise their hand as much as us having to find it, because again, that's, that's a failure point of us making sure we get our collections, is that if, you know, if I have a new person, if I have somebody who forgets to check the list, we have a lot of deeds that come through. The annual process of giving the credit is easy enough. Us making sure that we catch the transfer, there's a failure point.
Reporting requirements that all transactions involving Habitat Real Property Holdings, including but not necessarily limited to the date the property was acquired or transferred, the parties involved in the acquisition, in the acquisition of the transfer of the purpose of the current use of the property. So, it does say that all transactions involving the Habitat Real Property Holdings.
It just, if I'm reading it correctly, and again, I could be reading it wrong, it just says that they have to report that when they bought it, when they sold it, on the report that they give us on an annual basis, because that's in this section. The piece that I'm looking for is, they have to raise their hand and let us know that they're getting ready to transact one.
So, what I would say is, we could add that and be applicability period in terms of the credit, add a number five that reads 30 days prior to transfer of the property, the entity shall notify in writing the Wycomico County Finance Department that a sale of the property will occur in the next 30 days.
That's perfect. That, that again, has them have to raise their hand and us also be on notice that it should be coming through, so we don't miss it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have on the agenda is the contracts.
Yes. So, Charles is going to join me.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Personal service report.
Mr. President, do you prefer I stay? I don't really have much to add for this, I'm happy to stay up or stay in the gallery. You're just.
It's, it's okay.
Whatever you, whatever you choose.
All right. Whatever you choose.
So, I know we received from Laura some questions yesterday. We are still working on responses. The biggest one, so, we transacted this by watching payments go out the door. So, as payments went out the door, we created this list, and that's the list that you have here. This list is based on, the department is very, would be very easy for us to sort by department, but I know there was a request to support, to sort by type. We don't have all these sitting on our desk anymore, these have gone through the process, these have been filed, these have, and so, that is not, because that is not something we looked at, yes, we have a note as to what they are, but we may have to go back and pull invoices just to make sure we are categorizing them the same each time. So, that is not something that we can do by just doing a munis, or just doing an Excel sort. We can do an Excel sort by department and have that to you in the next day. We can't do a sort on the, the breakdown that was requested that quickly. We will literally have to look at the list again and all of these transactions and make sure we're categorizing them the same way across the board. So, again, we did this by, as invoices went out the door, we added them to the list based on the criteria that we wrote in here, is that we said, if there was something that, for the most part, if there was a product we were buying, if we were getting something, we were getting.
Something tangible.
Something tangible, a piece of equipment, you know, we were buying electricity, we were, you know, something tangible that we were buying, they weren't included on this list. So, then was the next level of judgment on our part, is whether or not we thought it meant the professional services if it, if it was an intangible item. And so, that is how this list was created over the first three months of the fiscal year.
Questions?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to dig into this too much, but. I haven't, I haven't had a chance to dig into this too much, but I guess if you go back to 72425, the Menory Green Alliance and the Lead for Life invoices, I didn't, I didn't think we, I thought we tabled that, did we?
They had other contracts with us.
That was contracts from before?
Yeah, those were other contracts.
Okay.
So they already had other contracts in place.
Uh huh, okay, all right. That answers that question. Then there was these ones, say, where were they at? Sorry about that. All those ones that were some med center for $564, I think they were in August, there was like 10 of them together, I've lost them now, I'm sorry.
TransMed LLC.
Everside Health.
$564, there's like 10 of them, is that, what is that?
August 8th.
I see that. I will have to pull that one. I don't.
I was wondering, is that that medical center that we?
No, the medical center is on the previous page, that's called Everside.
Okay.
I believe this is some, one of the checks that HR does for new hires, they have to go through a process, drug testing, and so that does get allocated to the various departments.
Okay, all right, okay.
But we will, I.
That's fine.
We will verify what this is.
Back to the sorting, Pam?
Yes.
That was, those were my questions, of course. So the descriptions are good, but if you can walk me through chronologically when things happen, they all, these ultimately get coded to an accounting code, and those are the types, I think you refer to them as, general categories. In terms of sorting, if, if you could wave your magic wand and make that work, that would make it a lot easier for us to, for at least me to skim down and just see the ones that are of most interest.
So unfortunately, no, so unfortunately, so unfortunately, the way this was created, we did not write down the GL account that these got coded to. We wrote, we, that I'm aware of.
I did not, I apologize.
So with that, we just wrote down here, we wrote down this, these, these pieces of information. It was the date that we were paying it on, so was it a per, P-card, a direct pay, or did it have a purchase order? Those are kind of our three ways of making payments. Then we wrote down these transaction numbers. Those transaction numbers help us find the detail again when we're looking for it, so we can go pull that invoice. So this gives us the ability to pull the invoices again without having to try to find this individual dollar amount. Then the one, the ones that have a column that have a number that has, I don't know, is that eight digits, that's the P, those are ones that have POs. So again, that's another way for us in the system to pull them. Then it's the dollar amount, then it's the vendor. The ones that have a number are vendors that got paid either by a direct wire, ACH, or check. If there's no number, that meant it got paid by a P-card. So you'll see if it says P-card. And then the last thing is that we did a department and what it was. So we didn't do an account number, but the thing is, is even with an account number, we could have depend, we don't have a infinite number of account numbers. So we could have things on your list that fit in two different categories within the same account number. So we have, so we have a line item in some departments called consulting services. Well, that consulting services could be for IT, it could be for engineering, it could be for, so again, even the account number itself isn't going to tell you what service was provided per se. So again, we can sort by the department tomorrow. I can't sort by that list tomorrow, because we literally will have to go look at all these again.
Can I ask a stupid question here? What is the risk that we're trying to address?
I was getting ready to say, I wasn't here when this topic came up, but I think I understand. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking for consulting services. Personal service contracts covers a much broader area, as you, as you well know. So I think it's consulting services that are, in some instances, a fairly open scope of work, a fairly open timeframe, and I think it, to some of my fellow council members to verify or deny, but I think that was the, the impetus of the request. So obviously, you're doing as well as you can narrowing it down, but it's probably even a lot more, more narrow, you know, of these however many pages there's could.
So again.
Could be listed on one page or less, I think.
So any item that went through a PO process basically went through our purchasing requirements. So they typically, I won't say always, but they will typically have a contract behind them that was signed. Now, I, the reason I'm saying no, typically, we have just instituted some additional controls on the finance side of things to make sure when I'm being asked, or Charles is being asked, do the departments have the funds to make a payment and that the contract can be signed? We're also wanting to make sure that procurement rules were followed to get to that point. And so one of the things that we have instituted is we have started doing purchase orders on lower dollar amounts that may or may not require to go through the whole procurement process based on the purchase guidelines. But that helps me as the finance director make sure that the departments had been thinking about the purchasing rules when they, and so I can stop something being signed potentially. So again, items that are P-card and/or direct pay may not have a contract associated with them. Sometimes we do pay something that has a contract with a P-card for a variety of reasons, but then that doesn't follow through the process and you, you can't, we have to manually relieve the PO in that respect. So to accomplish what you're looking for, potentially, if I'm understanding what you're looking for, you're looking for things that have open-ended contracts that don't have a specific task associated to that.
Specifically consulting, I think is, was the, was the.
So consulting is very different than a professional service. If, if you want us to go back and relook at this list and narrow it down to consulting and consulting without a specific purpose, this list could be.
Actually, to go back to the beginning, I don't know whether the request was for professional services.
It was.
It was, okay, so that might have been a misnomer or something.
Because that's how the legislation was written. The legislation was written broad at professional services with no specific definition of what professional services was. This is what finance came up with as what professional services was. So again, the definition of professional services is not equivalent to consulting.
Not by any means, yeah, it's much broader in it, but I think, I think that's the narrow, if anybody can jump in here, I think that's the narrow, narrow information or, or contracts that we were looking for.
When we're budgeting, when we're budgeting, we're budgeting professional services, but we don't always know how that's delineated at all.
So professional services, most of the time, we're budgeting an estimate based on what projects we think we are going to do because we don't yet have contracts for anything.
Talking about professional services such as hiring somebody to, to handle the software IT, we're not really looking for that. We're looking for, I think Dave was suggesting, some of the more obscure professional services, which are led to be hiring any individuals or any companies to work on a particular project.
So, but that would.
A definition in that legislation as to what professional services.
Yeah, but that definition was very, very broad. It had IT, it had, it had a lot of things in that. So again, if you're looking for just consulting services, that's a very much more narrow definition.
Could be too narrow, too.
So that's, that's.
That's up to interpretation.
So again, you know, with what you just described, every contract that we hire an engineer for, for doing engineering at the Civic Center or engineering at one of the, when we did engineering for the Sheriff's Department, all, per what you said, that's how I would define an engineering services contract. It's got a very specific scope, but it is, so that is how I would define what you said. So you would get engineering services on the list as well as open-ended consulting.
And if we did, that would be okay, we could certainly sort through that. I think you could, we wouldn't need anything, what would you think, we wouldn't need anything more than $1,000, any less than $1,000 at all.
Maybe probably even a higher threshold, I think.
Well, so, but that, there's the problem, because again, I can get an invoice for, are you looking at $1,000 an invoice or $1,000 a contract? Because I can get an invoice for $1,000 on a million-dollar contract. And so tho, so if you would like us to do another month or two under a new definition, we can do that, or we can scrub this data under a new definition and come back to council. We would not be able to come back to council for the first meeting in November, we would be able to come back for the second meeting in November with this set of data. I can't do a new set of data.
Yeah. Well, let's talk about some more things that might be a little embarrassing. $600 for a DJ.
What date?
Eight, six.
Let me, let me interject real quick.
I got some more, John.
I know you do, I know you do, but the reason I'm, as a point of order here, and I'm wondering how this forum should be established here. You're going to be asking questions about purchases to the finance director who is not in charge of that department. Would it be more efficient use of our time for us to look at this, review this with Laura Hurley and say, please send out these requests to these departments on why we're spending $600 on this and $600 instead of asking the finance department?
That specific one I can answer, but.
I understand, but you see what I'm saying, Joe?
Now, I see what you're saying, but, you know, we were asked to, to look at this.
Okay.
Okay, you got $16,500 to a company called Dew East for consulting for LMB. I looked Dew East up, it just sounds like, I don't know what it, I don't know what that's for. I mean, they just, they talk about rah rah rah, I think, you know, will make you feel good by talking to us. But here's the one that, LMB, they wrote three direct pays, nine, 10, a 225, $484 each for face painting.
And again, most likely, that one I can't, but my guess is they.
You shouldn't be.
They have, they have events.
It's not your responsibility.
But they have, but they have events where they are inviting the public. The DJ was for USSA, I can guarantee you, the DJ was for USSA opening ceremony.
I don't want to micromanage it all in public. I think these are issues that we can direct.
There's a lot of DJs in here.
Finance has supplied us with quite, quite a large list. We know which departments that is, they're associated with, and I would think that the council independently could talk to Mrs. Hurley and say, listen, here are my concerns. I have these seven different items that were mentioned, could we please get something out, an email out to these individual departments to explain what they're, what they're specific?
John, we can go into what they call the open checkbook and come up with probably a lot of questions other than the lists they've, you know, I mean, really.
Yeah, I get that.
So again, I, I'm asking, what next step does council want us to do? Do you guys want to give us a list of questions off of this data? Do you want us to go back on that consulting definition with an engineering focus that between the two of you has stated and refine this data? I, I'm, I just need to.
I think the key is really like David suggested, we're looking at a lot of it for consulting. This is informative, though, this is very informative, but we're really trying to look at consulting where we're, where we get, we get blindsided by saying, wait a minute, who is this? What is that? How is this being done? And there, there are expenses that are going out the door that we are completely oblivious to.
So I will say, in the definition, in my mind, as a finance director, a DJ would not be on the list as a consulting service. So I would not be providing that to you per my definite, per my definition of consulting and engineering.
That's why I'm afraid to leave a gray, that's why I'm afraid to get too precise, because I'm afraid it'll.
This has been part of my difficulty with this, is it, what's a definition? Because I need to be sure to include everything that you all want, so I have to be a little liberal with that definition. A DJ, you know, that's something intangible being done. I know that's something that I don't have particular training to do, at least if I tried it, I'm sure you all would agree that I'm not able to do it. Is that a professional service? It does take that additional step.
When I went through this, this stuff, I can't read my glasses, I questioned a lot of stuff, like that Dew East and from LMB, because they're supposed to give most of that money to families, and a pedestrian walkway. I would like to justify, what I personally want, not from you, the justification from the departments, what that money was used for and why they needed to use that. Tourism, I know it's US, US $88,000, was that was for a bid to get the softball, but it was $88,000. Then tourism had marketing stuff, you know, and, and it's a lot of questions you all can't answer at all. I would like to get that, make a list to get the justification.
We will gladly take a, if you will have Laura submit a list to us, we will gladly get you further definitions of which of these invoices you would like further information. I would prefer, instead of them going out to the departments, if they could please come through finance so that finance can compile, compile them all, I would greatly appreciate that.
You guys don't have enough to do?
I would greatly appreciate, because these payments all come through us, and I would prefer to be able to compile this. Plus, it gives us, it gives me information as to what questions council has. If I don't see those questions, I have no way of knowing what you guys are interested in.
Well, let's leave it as it is, because there's nothing wrong with having too much information, as long as it's not too time-consuming. Maybe by departments, would that be the best way to, for us to review it, if it were by departments instead of whatever you've got here, because it's somewhat scattered.
We can resort this by tomorrow by department, and you would have it by department.
If you would, that would be fine, then we can decide whether we like it more, okay?
Okay. One last question, I'm sorry, I interrupted, if I may. Do you want us to continue to be doing this, because we have kind of paused this, we only did three months? We are not compiling this at this moment from October 1st forward. If you would like us to restart the process, I suggest we restart it on 11/1.
Doesn't all this go into the open checkbook this year?
Not in this format in a way that you would be able to decipher it the same way.
All right, well, continue on, I don't know why you couldn't do it beginning October 1st.
We would have to go back, because we did not do it with the stuff that has gone out the door between now and the, you know, the 1st to the 21st.
If you don't mind, I'd like to try to stay online with it, but yes, and we'll, we'll continue it as it is, if you would send us the department, and then we'll move from that. We know this could be a little bit difficult, but it would, it goes a long way in us being a lot more comfortable with how the spending is in the county.
Go ahead, go ahead. Back if I may, to the original comment, this is payment out the door, as you mentioned, Pam.
Yes.
So it's perhaps, as it, as it relates to what we're trying to achieve here, it is purchase orders that are related to a contract or just contracts. I think that's probably, if it's a consulting contract, I think that's where the interest is. All the other questions about specifics, I think, are a separate issue that we can funnel those however so, but just trying to get down to what our real question was, back to your question, Charlie. I think it's, I think it's contract-related, and it's, and it's, it's far less and far more focused, and, and maybe not necessarily driven by expenditures out the door.
But the only way for us to, that is our way of being able to know what, because, yes, finance signs off on when contracts are signed to make sure that there's budget available, but I don't then keep a list waiting for those things to come across. I, we, the next time we see them is when somebody is submitting an invoice for payment. And so we don't.
That's where you're trying to capture it.
We're trying to capture it on the payment side of things, because the, the number of contracts that we would then have to manage is, is not feasible. I mean, this, this was extremely time-consuming, Charles did it. My concern is, is again, if you say contracts, there are still times, so I would say, okay, then we don't look at purchase cards, but there are still times that we pay a contract by a purchase card. And so then I would be eliminating those things. So unfortunately, at this moment, we will continue at the level that we are, we will get you a sort tomorrow by department, and then we will look for you guys to give us a listing of questions on the current list.
And maybe we can help you by filtering a few more things as we move through the process.
Just say, the more limited we can make the scope, the easier this will be.
I understand.
If.
That was the objective of asking for the contracts. I thought that might lessen the load and reduce it greatly, but apparently it won't.
No.
If we can discuss what the risk. If we can discuss what the risk is, the better chance we have of actually finding a workable solution. This all happened on the payment end, which we've already, the department head already said we have this need, it's gone through the budget process, they've gone through finding the appropriate vendors, work has been done. And so at that point, you know, it's a done deal. If you're looking to have a point of approval, that's got to happen way before, and finding that point to be able to do it most efficiently.
Well, we don't always know that, and unfortunately, we don't always get that during the budget process.
Yep. We will get you a listing tomorrow, and we will look for a list of questions back, and then we will keep track. Thank you.
Limited to this list about questions?
I mean, this is, that's a council question.
Okay, I'll ask him.
Okay, that's not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any motion during the going closed session?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor?